Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. It is moved by Counselor Cairns, second by Counselor Hunter. Be it resolved that the council agenda is presented on June 17, 2025 be approved as circulated. All in favor, please vote. And that carries, thank you. It is moved by Counselor Jorgensen, second by Counselor Johnston. No, it's not. It's moved by Counselor Johnston, seconded by Counselor Jorgensen. Be it resolved, the next portion of the meeting be closed to the public in order to consider a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. Please vote. And that carries, thank you. And for the public's viewing pleasure, we will be back at two o'clock. Okay, welcome back. We don't have anything coming out of closed session. And now it's moved by Counselor Cairns, second by Counselor Hunter. Be it resolved that the committee, the whole agenda of June 2017, 2025 be approved as circulated. Please vote on that. And that carries, thank you. Counselor, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest today? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. And now we will roll right into our working session, which is on asset management plan. Director Stacy, would you like to make some introductions? Oh, first I'd like to say welcome to our guest, and now you can introduce them. Thank you.
Good afternoon, your worship, and members of council. Today I'm pleased to have with us Elio Ibriam. Elio's with Public Sector Digest. Elio's worked with us on a number of projects, including our previous asset management update. He worked with the town on implementing our asset management plan software, worked with us on the operational management system we put in place recently, and now on to the next phase of our asset management plan journey. As council is aware, the province has legislation in place specific to asset management, and through that legislation, they have milestones that you need to hit at certain specific times. And in the capital budget this year, council approved an allocation towards meeting that next milestone, which is to look at our core service level, core assets, and the service level attached to them. And really to go out to the public and see what the satisfaction level is in response to those assets and how they're being serviced. And with that, I will turn it over to Elio to do the presentation. Thank you.
All right. Again, thanks for having me, and thanks for welcoming me a couple of times. Appreciate that. So as Andrew mentioned, what we're going to be focusing on today is levels of service when it comes to infrastructure services provided by the town. And as mentioned as well, this is part of the OREG 58817, which is an Ontario regulation that focuses on managing infrastructure assets. With this being said, what we're going to start with is a simple introduction on what asset management is, and then we're going to discuss some background in relation to the Ontario regulation and how the province has set some clear milestones for municipalities to follow in order to be in compliance with this regulation. The next item on the agenda would be discussing some of the community and staff engagement results, because we've engaged staff as they know a lot about these assets and how they're managed, and how they're financed, and how they're operated. But we've also engaged the public, and we've received a bit more than a couple hundred responses, which is a very high response rate to such an engagement. So we're going to be discussing some of these results and why they're important to developing any type of asset management plan. In terms of next steps, we'd also like to engage council in this process. So one of the goals of this session today is to show you or to present to you what the public had to say, their levels of satisfactions, their willingness to pay, and how they would like for services to be prioritized. And we'll also discuss some of the staff responses related to performance of infrastructure. And towards the end of the session, we'll discuss a survey that would be shared with council for you to convey your opinions in order for us to include that in our decision-making process as part of this plan. First and foremost, asset management and the Ontario regulation. So why do we do that to a certain extent? What are some of the reasons behind adopting asset management? First and foremost, it is a regulation, and therefore, any municipality in Ontario has to develop these asset management plan in order to be in alignment with provincial regulations. On the side that's more practical or more professional, asset management does improve the reliability of infrastructure and does help us in making sure that we have a minimal amount of downtime when it comes to infrastructure services and infrastructure delivery. And this really helps us in providing continuous service and a good level of service to the community members. It also does help us with better long-term system integrity and integration with financial plans and service plans and whatsoever. Because at the end of the day, when it comes to building infrastructure or developing infrastructure projects, one has to take into account that these projects are way beyond the construction phase when it comes to maintaining these assets and projects over the lifecycle. And most of the cost of owning infrastructure is actually incurred within the operations and maintenance phase of these assets. And therefore, it's essential to make sure that we have something in place in order to plan for the rehabilitation and renewal of these assets in the future. And therefore, this really helps us in achieving some cost savings when it comes to prioritizing projects and making sure that we mitigate risk when it comes to infrastructure decisions. It's also a requirement for some provincial and even federal funding when it comes to proving that a municipality is able to manage its infrastructure assets through its plans. So when it comes to the actual core definition of asset management and levels of service, it is effectively the act of balancing performance, cost, and risk. So we want to make sure that whatever services that we're providing are being provided at an acceptable level of performance, while taking into account the budget and the risk of failure of these assets or these services. So when it comes to the town of Gravenhurst and the assets that are managed by the town, we have the road corridor, the storm water system, bridges and structural culverts, buildings and facilities, outdoor recreation and parks, fleet and equipment, as well as public safety infrastructure, so fire vehicles, fire facilities, et cetera. Going back to the regulation, so according to the province, the municipalities had to develop asset management policies by 2019. This is something that you've done. And then the province gave the municipalities a few years to develop asset management plans focusing on current levels of service. Or in other terms, the current state of the infrastructure in terms of replacement costing, in terms of levels of service provided, and in terms of current financial needs. With this being said, what the province is in compliance with, I guess today, is the 2024 milestone, which is focusing on current levels of service for core and non-core infrastructure services. So the non-core infrastructure services would focus on machine and equipment, fleet, facilities, and the core services would focus on roads, bridges, storm water systems, et cetera, so the assets that are more complex from an engineering perspective. With this being said, this is point A in our analysis, so focusing on current levels of service. The focus of today's session, or the focus of the 2025 asset management plan, is deciding on what needs to be done in order to decide on what proposed levels of service the municipality would like to adopt. In other terms, we know where you are right now from a current levels of service perspective in terms of condition, in terms of cost, in terms of performance, and we want to know where should the community head in the future? What's affordable, what's sustainable, and what's something required by the community members, or what's something that's conveyed by staff, or what's something that's a council priority? In order for us to propose these levels of service and look at their financial requirements, their impact on capital budgets, and the long-term impact on growth and sustainability of the community. Any questions so far? So a very important aspect of this process, other than the data and other than the fancy equations that we typically use to look at performance levels and whatsoever, is actually looking at what the public and what the staff members had to say in terms of infrastructure performance, in terms of needs, in terms of desires. So why do we engage the community member or the community members? And that's something that's really important when it comes to service delivery, because at the end of the day, service is meant to be delivered to, let's say, clients, for the lack of any better term, or in this case, community members, right? Because these are taxpayers at the end of the day. So getting their feedback on infrastructure is, or infrastructure performance is important, because at the end of the day, they're using these services, they're the ones who are experimenting the road reliability, the storm management systems capacity, and the impacts of any type of system failure. And at the end of the day, they are the ones paying for these services. So therefore, it's very essential to engage them, gather their opinions, which are very relevant in some cases, and see how can we measure their levels of satisfaction against their willingness to pay for better services in some cases, or if they're happy with the current scenario, then the status quo is probably fine. In terms of the information collected, or what did we focus on when we were collecting these survey results or these, or survey people using these questions? We looked at how important is a specific municipal service when it comes to the public? Do the public see roads as assets that are more important than storm water systems? Do they really value parks and recreation? And as you know, we definitely end up with different opinions when it comes to these levels of importance. Another aspect when it comes to that engagement survey is looking at the satisfaction levels, or in other terms, how satisfied are people with the services? Or in other terms, how are how satisfied are people with the services that they're currently receiving? Because the level of importance is something else compared to the level of satisfaction. And these two metrics are very important for us to measure. Because if we do have an area that's very important with a very low level of satisfaction, then this might be a red flag and this might be something that we need to address. Another very important aspect, or I would even say it's the most important aspect in our analysis, is the willingness to pay. Because at the end of the day, what members of the public may require or may desire is something, and what they're willing to pay for is something else. So in terms of willingness to pay, this is how we can measure the real importance or the real priority of a specific service aspect, comparing it to its level of performance. Another key aspect surveyed as part of the survey is the service prioritization. So in other terms, if any member of the public had a million dollars to spend, where would they spend that? So this really helps us in doing a competitive analysis between different service areas. Another aspect is sustainability and growth, and what the members what the members of the community had to say in terms of their vision for the growth and the sustainability of this growth for Gravenhurst. Another aspect is the willingness to pay for service growth, which is another element related to upgrades and building more infrastructure in the future, because that's also a proposed levels of service to a certain extent. Because when we're building more, we're expanding networks, this helps us achieve a higher level of availability for the services to the people who require them. So going to how this information will inform decision making. It would help us in prioritizing the resources that are available to deliver these levels of service or to manage these infrastructure assets. Because if we know that a specific area is is lacking and is important to the public, this is how we can prioritize financial resources and even human resources when it comes to service delivery. Service improvements and budget planning is another aspect. Because if we know that some specific areas are performing well and people are happy with them, let's maintain the status quo. And if we know that specific areas are not performing that well, and there's a there's a capacity for improvement, let's maybe focus our capital investments and our human resources there. And this really helps us in also making some decisions in terms of how we're going to invest in infrastructure upgrades, renewals, additions, et cetera. Service expansion and growth planning is another aspect. Because once we know what areas need to grow more or what services need to be enhanced, we can then include that in our master planning and our growth planning exercises. And we can ensure that we're achieving sustainability in terms of adopting initiatives and making sure that there is a certain line of alignment between master plans, strategic plans, asset management plans, growth plans, and all of these great plans. Because they only work well when they're working well together. Another key aspect when it comes to decision making is making sure that we get some community buy-in when it comes to decisions. Because we've included this as part of the asset management plan development process at its early stages, because we really valued the public's opinion. Because at the end of the day, as mentioned earlier on, they're the ones paying for the service and they're the ones using these these services. In terms of the engagement results, and I don't think there's anything surprising there, 95% of residents said that roads are important to very important. And that's effectively the case throughout the country, I would guess. Having worked on similar projects all over the country coast to coast, that roads are usually the most important asset, because most of the people or 99% of people drive on these roads and they use that service on a daily basis. And it's what's visible to the community as well, because everybody can see a pothole, but not everybody can see a damage that's in a storm water pipe, right? In terms of satisfaction, 41% of respondents expressed satisfaction with the current level of service that's provided by the roads. But that's something that we need to highlight here, because effectively, this is representing the sample that filled out the survey. And we do have some other metrics and other data sources that show the road quality, which is the pavement condition index and all of the studies that the town the town has conducted in the past. And what we can see from the actual road needs study is that the road conditions are not in a terrible shape compared to other municipalities and compared to municipalities in the area. So that's something that's important to highlight. But on a positive note, the people who said they were not very happy with the the road quality or the comfort of driving on these roads, 61% of them expressed a willingness to pay to enhance that service level when it comes to the driverability on these roads. The public or some of the public responses conveyed that there are too many potholes, too rough, not enough orders. That's a literal copy and paste. Staff said that downgrading some paved roads to gravel would be more cost effective, giving drainage issues. So these are some main highlights from the actual survey. Item number two, bridges and structural culverts, very similar in terms of level of importance to roads, probably a bit less, 87%. Looking at the level of satisfaction, more people are satisfied with the actual condition of road of bridges and structural culverts. I'm not sure why. And 50 almost 50% of the respondents said that they are willing to pay more for service enhancements for bridges and structural culverts. The public said that they value safety inspections. Staff said that bridges are in good shape due to consistent maintenance. And this is actually a fact, because as you may know, bridges and structural culverts are regulated by the province of Ontario. And the municipality has to inspect them every two years and develop maintenance program for these bridges, giving their potential impacts on on safety. So the data that we have there for bridges and culverts, using bridge condition indices and other metrics, really help us define what needs to be done in terms of actual work and in terms of actual maintenance or rehabilitation. When it comes to storm water management, 82% of people rated the service as important. Staff highlighted frequent drainage issues and emphasized on limited resources to address standing water and flooding. 66% of residents were satisfied or neutral with the actual performance of the system. And staff pointed problems during one in a five-year or and one in a hundred-year storm events. Almost half of the respondents mentioned that they would support additional investment when it comes to enhancing the capacity of the storm water system. And staff said catch-up maintenance and pipe uprising are urgently needed. And as you may know, the township has developed a storm master plan, which did highlight lots of these upgrade requirements and their urgency level. And and this is actually getting integrated into the asset management plan figures as we speak right now. In terms of climate change and resilience, around 80% of people felt that this is important. And 45% of people were either neutral or dissatisfied with the actual initiatives or the actual actions that are taken to improve climate change and extreme weather event resiliency. 53% would support funding improvement when it comes to investing in this aspect of infrastructure risks. The public mentioned that they'd like to see improvements to the hydro grid, which is not operated by the town, obviously. But that's the only reason why I left it here is because we always receive these comments whenever doing public engagement. There is a very big challenge explaining to the public what services the municipality does operate and where the tax orders are going. And what's the difference between something that's provincial, something that's federal, and something that's operated by the county or a second-tier level of government? Staff mentioned that this is not specifically addressed, but climate concerns surfaced in comments on infrastructure vulnerability. Buildings and facilities, around 75% of respondents mentioned that this is important to them. And staff noted limited limitations in inspections, maintenance delays, and misrepresentation due to reliance on HVAC assessments. In other terms, there might be a need for more investigations in terms of building condition assessment to know the actual need of some of your facilities. In terms of satisfaction, 68.3% are generally satisfied. And staff were more mixed citing deferred projects. In terms of willingness to pay, a bit more than 40% of residents have shown a willingness to pay to improve the service delivery when it comes to facilities and and buildings. And looking at some of the comments that we received, the public said that there is a need for more accessibility and modernization of of some facilities. And staff mentioned that the main office needs upgrades, HVAC condition ratings over state health, which is which is actually true to a certain extent. Because with the lack of any actual engineering condition data, it's very hard to judge the full requirements of rehabilitation and and renewals for facilities and buildings. In terms of outdoor recreation, 85% of people prioritize this aspect. And I guess that's very, I guess, reasonable due to the location of Gravenhurst and it being present in the Muskogees. Staff comments were limited in this area. And around 63% of residents mentioned that they were satisfied with the service. And around 57% were willing to invest more in outdoor recreation. Some of the representative comments or one of the representative comments that we that we received was requesting more outdoor pickleball courts, which is another level of service, because effectively, this is what these assets are are meant to to do. In terms of fire services, vehicles, machinery, and equipment, 91% felt that these services are essential. And staff noted that aging machinery and limited investments are a barrier to efficient service. In terms of satisfaction, 71.1% of people were satisfied or did not express any concerns. Staff satisfaction was lower due to frequent breakdowns and deferred replacement. Around half of the respondents are willing to pay for improvement when it comes to vehicles and machinery equipment, as well as fire services. No major issues were highlighted by by the public as far as written comments. And staff mentioned that we do what we can with what we have, which is effectively a very common aspect for municipal government, especially when you're, I guess, challenged by extreme weather events that no municipality is prepared for or has the capacity to prepare for. So the climate change aspect is is of the essence here. And I mentioned an example from another city. I personally live in Vancouver. And Vancouver is a very big city, 600,000 people live there. But Vancouver is not ready for snow removal. Whenever it snows, the city shuts down, because they haven't been historically prepared for that. And it takes time to prepare for these aspects when it comes to incorporating climate change into capital plans and into levels of service. So that's something to highlight there. In terms of growth, 92% of residents emphasized affordable housing and managed growth. So there's a very high stress on this area. Around 70% of people or 69% showed dissatisfaction with current housing options. And around 55% of residents are supporting or are in support of infrastructure expansion to accommodate housing. So in this case, although, and I had this chat with Andrew, I know how affordable housing is not currently a municipal mandate here in Gravenhurst or something that might might be considered in the future. But to build more homes, there's a need for more infrastructure. And the Canadian average for municipal infrastructure versus households is around $100,000 per household. So for every household in Canada, there's a requirement of around $100,000 worth of municipal infrastructure to accommodate for each and every household. And that's the Canadian average. It's higher in some places, it's lower in other places, depending on the government structure and depending on the province and depending on the years of government. But $100,000 is a benchmark that we typically use in in our analysis. So representative comments, the public is requesting more affordable housing, and they've really stressed on that. And staff did mention that they have concerns tied to roads, facilities, and IT systems readiness for future growth. With this being said, this is kind of a short summary on what the public and what the staff had to convey as part of this engagement process. But there are more detailed results that you can go through if you'd like. In terms of the next steps, the reason why we've shown this today is to give you a snapshot in time on what the public and what the staff had to say in terms of willingness to pay, prioritization, levels of importance, and all of these figures. Because we'd also like to engage council in decision making. And having presented these facts and having developed a previous asset management plan, you you have lots of resources to use when it comes to responding to similar questions to the ones we asked the public. So we'll be sharing this survey, I guess, after this meeting sometime. And we'd really appreciate it if you can have a look at it and maybe get it back to us in the next couple of weeks or so. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Elio. I mean, there's things in there I think all of us would say we could see coming, right?
Of course.
You know, the roads are in decent condition, but people aren't satisfied with them, depending on what road they live on.
Of course.
But councillor, are there any questions about the asset management thus far? I'm going to go over to councillor Johnston.
Thank you, your worship, to you. Elio, thank you very much for a very interesting presentation. My first question is, will there be any further public engagement in terms of the results of that survey? That survey is very limited. It does give a snapshot, but it's a very limited number. You know, when you when you talk about 169 people or 189 people of the population of this municipality, that's a very small sample size. That doesn't mean that the results aren't valid. But I'd be interested in hearing from the public, the general public, about what their comments might be on the results of that survey. So I don't know whether that's that's something that's being planned or not. I just suggest that. Secondly, it's very timely coming on on right now. My priority at district and across Muskogees is the climate. When I did my 2019 asset management plan for my municipality, climate and the environment wasn't even on the radar. Nobody was even talking about it. So it wasn't there. When I upgraded the plan in in '22, it was starting to get some noise. So I was pleased to see the numbers in the survey that you did about climate, because I think that's there's going to be more of a more of a priority on that as we as we go through that. So very interesting numbers. I appreciate them very much. As I said, I'm just and and the other thing about the small sample size is that when people say, you know, there's a willingness to to pay for increased service or a higher level of service. And and my experience with surveys across the years, it's easy for people to say that. When you when you don't say how much you're prepared to pay, you know, what level of increase you're prepared to pay, it's 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 not real meaningful for me, I'm only speaking for myself, when people say they're willing to pay. Because I I my experience has been that that depends, as the mayor said, depends on a lot of factors. But it depends on how much and when, those sorts of things. But anyway, thank you for the presentation. Very interesting. Thank you.
Hey, councillor Jorgensen.
Thank you, your worship. I just I think echo, we're in agreement again. There's a new trend, Peter. You know, first of all, the yeah, it appears to me to be a rather small sample size, so I don't want to draw too many conclusions from it. But But that item on the ability to, you know, or willingness to pay, I think depends a lot on your ability to pay. I think people, you know, in general who understand, well, you get what you pay for in terms of road work or whatnot, you know, and people who want to see improvement to the level of service on our roads, the people that can afford to pay will say, yeah, I'll pay more, but people who can't afford it would probably have a different opinion. So it seems like a fairly obvious, if you look at it that way. The one item that I feel is missing from this, because it is an asset, we have vacant properties that the town owns that I don't feel are identified in the asset management plan, and they are definitely an asset, and I brought this up before, that I think we need to look at a strategy for dealing with some of the vacant, in many cases, or in some cases, it's waterfront property that we own, that we need to have a plan for managing that property. Why are we sitting on it? Why do we own it? What is the purpose behind it? And could we be selling those properties to make up shortfall for some of this stuff that we've identified? That's something I know we've talked about before, but I haven't really seen any, and I keep looking at Mr. Stacey on this, but, you know, it's all of us, it's us giving direction as well in terms of a strategy and part of the asset management plan, because in terms of value of those properties or whatnot, you know, I think they should be included. So if there's anyone who wants to comment on that, I'd love to hear it.
Well, before I go to staff, I would say they're not included because they don't cost us anything to keep. Like, they're not, they're not an expense to us, we're not paying taxes on them, they're just, like you said, they're just there, but I would imagine that they don't require any funding. Anyway, who wants to take this? Director Stacey?
Through you, your worship, and I may defer to the treasurer to add some dynamic to the conversation, but I can tell you councillor Jorgensen, as recently as last week, or earlier this week, actually, we met with senior management to look at our properties and what properties are appropriate for disposal, and continued to work through that exercise. There is an exhaustive list of properties, as you can imagine, but not all those properties are even usable, which is unfortunate, or they're in sensitive areas that they shouldn't be used for some, for environmental reasons. So there's a bit of legwork that needs to occur before I think I would feel comfortable coming forward to council and saying, these are the properties we should divest of ourselves, because it's a project itself. But I'm pleased to report that those discussions have been going on quite frequently amongst the team, and like I said, we met this week to talk about a few of our own, and we have a few ideas that, when the timing's right and we feel comfortable that we've checked all the boxes of whether or not we should dispose of those properties, we'll be coming forward to you to ask for those, for permission for that. Regarding the survey itself, surveys are funny, right? I mean, depending on the topic of interest, you could, I was actually very impressed with the cross-section of people that we got, and I don't know if we put it out there for a few more weeks, if we would have done that much better, to be quite honest with you, although I do believe it may be appropriate to share some of the information during capital budget time of this is what the municipality is hearing. That may prompt some folks to come forward a bit more and maybe come to our council during those capital budget discussions to talk about what they want. Also, other things I think I would touch on in those surveys is, there was no distinction between what an upper-tier road is versus a lower-tier road. I can tell you from a lower-tier road perspective, I'm biased, obviously, but based on the scoring of our roads, they are in decent shape and in better shape than most municipalities of our shape and size. But unfortunately, some of those roads that are traveled a bit more, perhaps, that are owned by others, aren't in such good shape, and that becomes unfortunately reflective on our asset, our quality of asset in our community. So I would take the surveys with some subjectivity, other than to say, it appears we're investing in the right things. So I'll leave it at that, thank you.
I see your light, but I'm going to go over to councillor Varney, okay? Councillor Varney?
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. I guess my question is, on the people who were surveyed, do you have a percentage of the ones that were rural and the ones that were living in town? I would think that the percentage on the roads would come more from the rural areas, myself, and then on affordable housing and that type of thing would maybe come more from the town, I don't know. But it would be interesting to know with each of these, the percentage, because our town is so extensive, and more live in the rural areas than actually live in the town, yeah.
And that's the case. So we do have a breakdown based on the resident status, the residence location, and even demographics in terms of age. So we do have that breakdown, and that would be included as part of the detailed plan.
Okay, I'm going to go back over to councillor Johnston.
Thank you, your worship. Just to comment back to Mr. Stacey, just to be clear, I wasn't at all suggesting that we extend the survey. My command of the English language is failing as I get older. What I meant, Mr. Stacey, was, no, I'm always interested in what the public thinks about survey results, because it's come up at other municipalities I've monitored for the ministry, and in my own, in Nipissing, where when I put survey results out on our website and got comments from the public, they often were quite different than the survey. And again, I want to reiterate to Elio that the survey was, in fact, some help, it's a snapshot. We were having a meeting the other day about planning for the summit on the environment, and somebody suggested we do a survey to get some input from various sectors in the community, and a member said, what's the point? People don't respond to surveys. And I said, the point is, exactly, they don't respond to no survey either, right? Even if we get a small sample of people responding to the survey, at least we have some information. So I liked the survey, it was a small sample, but that doesn't mean that the results aren't insightful. And as I said, I wasn't expecting or asking that the survey be extended, just if there was some way we could let the result of the survey know to the public. That's all, thank you.
I would argue that's what we're doing here. Councillor Hunter.
Thank you, your worship, through you. The staff comment on the roads that says downgrading some paved roads to gravel would be more cost-effective, given drainage issues, is that something we've done in the past? I feel like this, like, satisfaction level would, I can't imagine anybody wanting their road that was paved to then be gravel, so I'm just wondering if that's ever been a success story in the past.
Through you, your worship, to councillor Hunter, I haven't done it at this particular municipality, but I have done it at other municipalities. Technology has changed, engineering has changed, what was once a certain type of road and maybe not satisfied to others, again, technology has changed. So as an example, if we had a surface-treated road that has ten cars on it a day, it costs more to maintain it in its current form because we have to send out the operation staff to patch those holes. We now have a grader, we have a very good calcium program where we apply calcium to these gravel roads, so they harden up almost like surface treatment, and if the pothole comes, we can just regrade the road again. So even though it's a downgrade, per se, the maintenance goes up and the ride quality improves. And part of our 2025 Road Needs Study, I believe I've mentioned this perhaps at the capital budget stage, that is one option I'm bringing back to council, is some of these roads that, whether they're in the urban area or the rural area, that cost the same price, but they serve a significantly different population, that we may want to look at some of these roads. And I'm sorry, downgrading's not a good road, there's probably a better term I can come up with, but that's essentially what you're doing. But again, the technology is there now that even a gravel road can be maintained to a very good riding quality condition.
Maybe not for roller skates. Councillor Jorgensen?
Thank you, your worship. As someone who lives on a gravel road, you know, I can say that I'm very pleased with the quality of our road, because it does, you know, recognizing it does serve a very limited population, so I'm more than happy with my gravel road. But it seems to me, and we've had many discussions about this as well, in terms of, you know, our asset management studies maintaining or striving to maintain the status quo as opposed to something that I think if you did a survey, you would find there's certain populations that want to see an enhanced level of service, i.e. taking on their cottage road. We've talked about this before. I think we need to make sure we do have a clear path for those people that do want to see something happen so that they can get enhanced, you know, winter maintenance, garbage pickup, that type of thing. I think we should be not just trying, striving to maintain what we have, but keeping an eye to, you know, further levels of service increases, you know, in time with a plan, with a mechanism for local residents to follow if that's how they, you know, we've identified there's people who are willing to pay more for a better level of service. Let's make sure that we've got something in place so that those people do come forward and they do want to pay for it, that we've got a mechanism in place to let them do that. And I know, again, this is something that Mr. Stacey has come to us with about, in terms of, I don't know what button I hit in my chair, it just went down. He's come to us before with, you know, this notion of how difficult it is to take on more roads, but I still feel we need to have, identify a mechanism to let people do that when they are willing to pay for it, and not make it a big, you know, just say no all the time, we can't, I don't think we can keep going forward just saying no.
That's what the local improvement plan, the local improvement is, isn't it? It's generally, isn't it too cost prohibitive for the people to bring up the roads generally to the standard?
Through you, your worship, yeah, a local improvement is a strategy to do just what councillor Jorgensen is indicating. There's also fee-for-service bylaws, there's various models that you could use, but when you start heading down that path, it's not just about the road, it's about placement of pull-up works yards, it's about additional half-million-dollar fleet trucks, it's about... So to your point, if this was something that council wanted administration to look at, it becomes a project on its own, and I think it needs to have the due care to look at it holistically and paint the picture for council of what the path you're heading down. I struggle with it at this stage, knowing the resources we have available to us, and we struggle today. So, I mean, that's a discussion for a different day, and I don't want to take it away from today's asset management plan discussion, but there's a lot of factors that go into that type of dynamic.
Okay, before I go back to councillor Varney, is there anybody else who would like to ask any questions or... Okay, councillor Varney?
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. Having had a cottage on Sparrow Lake, which was a gravel road, we never had potholes because the grader always came along and filled in those holes, and they would sometimes water it for the dust or tar it, whatever. But how does the winter snow plowing, how does that, how is it affected on gravel roads? I know we all thought we were really going up in the world when we got it paved, but now people are saying we never had potholes when we had a gravel road. Thank you.
Through you, your worship, to councillor Varney, really, you would treat a gravel road the same way as you would treat a service treatment road, as far as winter maintenance. You want that base to freeze up before you start plowing it, that's why we have snowpack roads and asphalt roads, which are not snowpack roads. So we treat roads very similar, service treated in gravel at this point.
Okay, are there any other questions? Well, I mean, I want to thank you, I think it's really interesting, I think I agree that a hundred and eighty people are some odd people, is actually quite a lot for these surveys. I wouldn't have thought it. And we obviously want to take the thank you, thanks to the people who did take the time to do that. And thank you for your presentation, and I'm sure there's more to come. There's, I think, some discussion around, you know, properties and roads, you know, taking over cottage roads, it certainly has created a lot of work for staff, this discussion. Anyway, thanks very much for coming, all the way from Vancouver, you said? Oh, okay, well, great. Oh, okay, welcome. Well, did you get a chance to look around? Did you? Oh, okay, great, good. Well, safe trip back.
Thank you.
And we thank you for coming and for your presentation.
Thank you so much.
Great.
Great day.
Okay, so we'll be back, council, at three o'clock for regular council. Okay, welcome back, everyone. We did start today at 1:45. We had a brief closed session, which nothing will be coming out of, and then we had a working session with about our asset management plan, exciting stuff. So we are going to roll into our deputations just as soon as we have Councillor Robinson. Please read the land acknowledgement statement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We would like to begin today's meeting by acknowledging the First Peoples, who for thousands of years before us were and are still the keepers and caretakers of this land, where we now live and work, and in particular, the Chipewas of Rama, Wata, Mohawk First Nations, and the Moon River Métis. We are dedicated to honoring Indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation with respect with all First Nation, Métis, and Inuit people. We recognize all the generations of Indigenous people and their historic connection to this place, and we are grateful for the opportunity to gather here at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. And today on our deputations, we are starting off with some exciting news. I have lots of great parts of this job, but this is one of them, is recognizing our staff. So it is my pleasure, on behalf of our council and staff, to congratulate Mr. Paul De Bias on earning his Certified Road Supervisor certification. Paul is our Public Works and Operations Foreman and is a trusted and valued member of the Town of Gravenhurst team. For those who don't know, the province granted the Association of Ontario Road Supervisors the exclusive right to use the Certified Road Supervisor designation in 1996. The four levels of certification, Associate, CRS, Immediate, and Senior, have mandatory experience and education criteria. Certified individuals may publicize their credentials by using CRS initials after their name. And now Mr. De Bias, who I can't see, by the way, is sitting right directly behind somebody else, is now entitled to use those letters. So certification matters. It bolsters professionalism, accountability, and morale. And ultimately, it allows staff to use their knowledge to make more confident decisions and thus serve the public more effectively. Paul, we are so proud of your achievements. Congratulations on reaching this milestone in your career and thank you for your dedicated service to our community. I hope you know how much we appreciate you and your effort. Thank you. (applause) All right, congratulations. I'm going to get to give you this.
Thank you.
There you, oh, go in front of here so you can be on the big screen. There he is.
Thank you.
What was I going to say? Okay. Okay, Paul loves the spotlight, so we did want to get a screen, a screenshot of him for those watching at home, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and now it's my pleasure to introduce Stephen Vetsis. Did I get that right? Yes, Vetsis, perfect, from Lexicon Energy. So come on up. We can just, yeah, that's the hot, yeah, hot mic.
Okay.
Yes, so welcome, thanks for joining us today. We appreciate all the work that Lexicon has been doing in our community and look forward to hearing about it. So the floor is yours.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for inviting us. It's always a joy to come up here to Gravenhurst. And I think just maybe a bit of background on why we're here, you know, we do our best to stay connected within the community and we've had a few meetings in the past, always a joy to come up and meet with Mary Lorenz and talk about what we're doing. And she felt that maybe it might be good to share our story a little bit more broadly with all of you, just to get to learn Lexicon a little bit more. There was a slide deck, I'm not seeing anything on the screen. Thank you. So maybe just for introductions, next slide, please. Oh, do I control this guy? I do, okay, this is fantastic, thank you. So I'm Stephen Vetsis, I'm the Vice President of Regulatory Affairs and Stakeholder Relations here at Lexicon, but I do have a couple members of the team with me as well. At the back there is Jody McLean, she's the Manager of Communications, Marketing, and Public Affairs, my team, and helps manage the relationships we have with the communities we serve, as well as Craig Gad, who's here, he's our District Supervisor for Gravenhurst. So he's the one keeping the lights on for all of you, supporting this community, and we're so thankful to have both of them, so maybe can I ask for a small applause? Sure.[1443.12][1443.12](applause) So a little bit about us. You see here, I think one of the things that really makes Lexicon so unique, so we serve more than 180,000 customers across South, sort of Eastern Ontario. And what makes us unique is it's a really broad range of service territory. So obviously here in Gravenhurst, we're here to talk to you today. What makes Gravenhurst unique is it's actually one of the biggest areas we serve in terms of landmass, but it contains only 3.6% of our total customer base. So it's a really unique area, low density, a lot of seasonal customers. But then you go down, you see some communities in between, Beaverton, Cannington, and you get, I just hit a button, Pickering, Ajax, Whippy, where you have more dense urban areas. And then you start heading east, Bowmanville, Newcastle Port Hope, and you get to Belleville. Belleville, a large city, but for us in Belleville, what makes it unique is it's actually where we have the majority of our industrial customers, that's our customer base there. And so one of the things we're really proud about at Lexicon is just how diverse the different kinds of communities and customers that we serve. We've got about 300 staff, our head office is in Ajax, and we've reformed from the merger of Veridian and Whitby five years ago, and we're very pleased to be here today. So maybe in terms of more specifically, what is it that happens here in the community? So this is a small little dashboard we've developed with the communities that we engage with. Maybe talk a little bit about reliability, because that's often the things that most people are concerned about. So here, if you take a look at that little reliability square in that bottom right chart, you see over the last four years, the relative number of outages here in Gravenhurst has been relatively stable. And what we've seen is in terms of the length of outages, probably a bit of an increasing trend. And you're probably looking at this for 24 and wondering why that number isn't a lot larger. These don't exclude major events, and we'll talk about the major events that just happened. But what are the main causes of outages here? Well, you might not be surprised to know that the number one cause in Gravenhurst is actually tree context. It accounts for more than half of the outages and makes a lot of sense, given this beautiful green community that you serve and the long lengths of line it takes us to serve. And the second is just defective equipment, as equipment ages out and it fails. In terms of other ways we support, we support growth, we connect customers. In 24, when these stats come from, we connected 30 new customers here in Gravenhurst, so that's both residential, small business. We made about $2.4 million in capital investment in the infrastructure in this community. And hidden beneath that, you'll see that we also, you know, gave to the community as well, so invested about $14,000 through our corporate giving program to various organizations. So just doing a bit of a deeper dive in terms of the investments we make, you know, a lot of what we focus on is on reliability. One of the biggest areas we spend for us is actually our annual tree trimming program. So we spent 318K here in Gravenhurst last year. And to give you a sense of scale of what makes Gravenhurst so unique, as a utility over our whole service territory, we have a budget, we had a budget that year of $1 million. And so despite the fact that Gravenhurst is 3.6% of the customers, it attracted over a third of the expenditures, just reflecting the unique challenges of the service territory. As well, we made some investments in feeders in the northwestern area of Gravenhurst to help improve reliability. And a key element of our annual investment is in aging infrastructure. As assets particularly poles, as they approach end of life, we try to invest proactively so that the infrastructure is ready and can withstand weather events when they occur. Now that said, you know, this last year's been a bit of a challenging one in Gravenhurst. We had a couple of really, really large storms. And so maybe we thought it might be good to share a little bit about the story of those storms. So the first one happened in December and we had about 140 centimeters of snow in two days. We had more than 6,500 customers lose power. And what was really challenging about this particular storm was access, road access was significantly hampered to the community. In fact, I think Highway 11 was closed, which made it really challenging for us to get equipment in.[1721.24][1721.24](cough) Excuse me. So a few things we, new things we rolled out, one was in order to access areas, for the first time ever, our crews, we outfitted them with snowshoes to access some of the more remote communities to help get to infrastructure more quickly before roads were cleaned. We also, given the extensive nature of the damage, piloted the use of drones. Typically in the past, when we would have outages, we would have our crews walk the lines to see where the issues were. This time, we were leveraging drones to help us identify that prematurely so that we could send crews where they were most needed. And so overall, it took us about seven days to restore the majority of customers, with the last group on the island getting a couple days later. Thank you so much, this is desperately needed, I really appreciate it. And I will say, one of the, I know a week might feel like a long time, but one of the things that helped us get power back quickly was just the excellent collaboration with your staff, in particular communicating where we needed to work, getting those areas prioritized for cleaning roads. So we just want to convey our thanks for that and just to really appreciate the partnership we have here with people in Gravenhurst. One of the things that was challenging with this storm is, and part of, if you were watching the stats, you would see a couple of days improvements in numbers going out, the numbers of customers being restored, and then we would have a step back because the amount of ice out on all, you know, we would make repairs, and then just the weight of all that ice would then come crashing down and undo some of the work that we had done. So that hampered restoration efforts a little bit. Took us seven days to restore power to most of Gravenhurst, with the exception of customers on the island. And the challenge we had with the island is that at the time, the ice wasn't frozen over in the winter. We were able to go over by snowmobile and make repairs, but in the island, it wasn't frozen enough, so we had to wait a few weeks. Again, really appreciated being able to connect with people in the community. I think the mayor put us in touch with a few cottagers' associations so we could reach out and let the, those were mostly seasonal customers on the island, so we reached out to let them know what our estimated restoration time was and were able to get those customers connected by early May. So, so once again, I think just a testament to the communication and ability to connect with the community that we have. And then one last thing I wanted to cover before we open up the floor to questions is just as an organization, we're, one of the things that makes me proudest as an employee of Alexicon is just how much we give in the communities, and that holds as well with Gravenhurst. And so as you see here on the slides, some of the organizations that we've donated to within the Gravenhurst community, you know, the Public Library, the Rotary Club, Gravenhurst Against Poverty. So really, really happy and proud to be able to support an organization that gives back and to organizations in need. And so that's just a little bit of a high level in terms of us as a Lexicon, and I hope this is one of many opportunities we can come and discuss here with the council and just really appreciate the ongoing partnership and communication that we've had with, with not only Mayor Lorenz and then at the staff level here. So with that, those are the prepared remarks. Happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Great. Well, thank you very much, and we did it all along because we know how much, how many resources and how hard your crews worked and that they were away from their families. But it's nice to be able to see you face to face and see Craig and Jody and say, thank you very much for everything you did for the community during these storms, unprecedented amount of work, unsafe conditions. And we really, you know, on behalf of council and on behalf of the community, I just want to say a heartfelt thank you because the amount of work was just tremendous, and I know there's still work ongoing. So we, we really appreciate it and know you didn't, you know, you worked as hard as you could, you know, nonstop until it was done. So we much appreciate that. So thank you on behalf of the Town of Gravenhurst. So, but with that, I am going to open the floor to council. Councilor Cairns, you have a question?
No, no, I don't have a question, but I have a comment to make. Thank you. My husband worked for the hydro, for your hydro, for many years and just retired. He worked for, started out in Milton, then moved to Gravenhurst, hydro, Veridian Hydro, and then, so I know what these guys go through, and I know what the families go through waiting for their husbands or family members to get home. You guys have done a great job. I am, I can't say enough about the hydro crews and how quick and how speedy and how patient they are and how good they are with the public when they're screaming at them to get their hydro on. You guys, I don't know if you take lessons or whatever, but it's amazing how you can handle the people who are upset, and legitimately, they do get upset because they're without power. So I just want to say a big, huge thank you from my husband, who now sits at home and doesn't have to go out during storms. And I remember the tornado that came through here, and I didn't see him for seven days. He just slept, and then he was working and sleeping and working. So I know what these guys go through, and I appreciate everything that they've done and continue to do for our community to keep the lights on. One question that I did have, though, and this is, this is from listening to other people saying, you know, the hydro, why does our power go off? Well, if everyone could afford to put everything underground, we wouldn't have the problems. But we're in Muskoka, and we all know that the terrain here is not possible to do underground servicing for the whole community. So the more people that can go underground, the better. The other thing that a lot of people don't understand is if they see sparks from their, from their transformer, or they can see that the switch is down, which I learned how to look for those, they'll know. But it's really important for the public to recognize that, to let the hydro know so that they aren't searching, because I'm glad to hear you have drones now, because he didn't have drones when he was doing it. He's only been retired a few years. So thank you again for everything that the hydro does, and we appreciate you.
And thank you for the generous words, and I hope they're going straight to the years of one of the brave gentlemen that actually did all that work, so.
Okay. I'm going to go over to Councilor Johnston.
Thank you, worship, through you. Stephen, I have a question, and then I have a supercharged comment. And the question is simply this, that why is Gravenhurst carved up like a pie? I didn't realize that, I live in a, in a building in the urban core, that we are a Lexicon, and thank goodness, thank goodness, thank goodness, that's not my supercharged comment, but I didn't, I didn't realize that, you know, we were surrounded by people that are being served by that other company. And over, over here, there's another area of Lexicon, and they are surrounded by that other company. Why is that so?
So it's just a function of the license. So we're, we're a monopoly, and so our, we're licensed to serve particular areas. And historically, the way that's been done is it, the areas have been defined by the extremities of the community itself. So if you actually go look at our license, you'll see from this road east to that road, et cetera. So I think it's just a nature of defining the service territory, and Hydro One's always been the other.
Yep. And, and my, my supercharged comment is this, I'm so happy to meet you and your team because during those two outages, I was so impressed. When I tried to get ahold of somebody to talk to at Alexicon, I got ahold of somebody right away. We have a summer home that's serviced by that other company, and sometimes I have to do five, six times. But anyway, when I talked to the people that took the phone calls about the outage, right, no one said to me, you know what, you're only 2.6% of our customer base, so I'm not sure I have time for you. They were so good in answering my questions, and every time I called, I got somebody immediately. And I was really impressed with the service that I was able to get from you and your team. So I just wanted to say, reiterate what my colleague said, thank you so much for what you do in this community, and I, you made a big impression on me. Thank you.
That's really kind of you to say, thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go over to Councilor Strength.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Thanks for the great presentation. So we know that you can do snow. We know that you can do ice. How, have you had any consideration for heat? Apparently, we're anticipating a really big, warm summer, and I just wondered if there's anything that you've learned over the course of the last six months or seven months, and if you can use what you've learned to anticipate brown outages or, you know, any potential heat, thunderstorms, that kind of thing.
I mean, the systems we utilize, we subscribe to a whole bunch of weather services, which help give us early line of sight onto, onto weather events. Now, they're not flawless, they're not without flaw. In fact, that, the, the snowstorm, we didn't even have any warning that that one was coming. That just sort of happened. That said, I think you mentioned the term brownouts. One of the nice things, we do have quite a bit of available capacity at Gravenhurst. So in terms of Alexicon's infrastructure, I think we're actually in a really good position, even if everyone's turning on air conditioning, et cetera. Typically, where we tend to see a bit more of an issue is that we're fed through Hydro One system, and so sometimes we can lose supply from Hydro One, even though our infrastructure's all right. You know, we, as a utility, we design our equipment to, to handle more extreme weather, so we do have it rated to take higher, higher temperatures. And I think you mentioned other kinds of weather, you know, we've had, we, it didn't impact Gravenhurst as much, but a couple of years ago in 2022, we actually had the directo run through a lot of our service territory, ticked on a lot of infrastructure. We had a whole station in Oxbridge that we had to rebuild in the span of a week, just from the devastation that occurred there. So I mean, some of the things that we try to do, certainly making sure that when we're building our infrastructure, we take into account, like, for standards to try and deal with the, you know, most significant weather outages that we can. Of course, you run into a limit at some point. You know, if you want to make something impervious, it eventually becomes too expensive. So we try and cover the majority of the circumstances through our design and then through the regular maintenance and replacing assets before they fail so that, that they're able to withstand these events when they come. I hope that answers, and I've said a lot of different things, I hope that covers some of the.
Okay. Counselor, are there any other questions? Okay. Again, I just want to thank you and thank the team for, and I'm just going to tell a quick, quick story. And we were doing our debrief from the winter storm the day before, or two days before, and I had the opportunity to have lunch with Craig that day, and we were saying what a, you know, we were saying, can you believe that storm? And then two days later, we got ahead again. And I think that Craig had just come up, sorry, I'm telling too much information about you, Craig, but Craig had just moved up, I think, prior to the storm, and then I was like, and you stuck around? Thanks so much. And I'm just so glad that you stuck around. I mean, I think now you're a very seasoned Muskogan, so thanks for sticking it out. But thanks very much for coming again. We appreciate it. I think it was a great presentation and gives us a bit of insight as to what, what goes on, how you keep the lights on. So thank you.
And thank, I swear to God, this has to be the friendliest of all the places that,[1288.13][1288.13](laughing) so thank you for that.
Oh, no, and I do, I should actually also thank you for the, the giving that you've done, you know, on behalf of the, on behalf of the Advisory Committee as well, who, you know, that have some input there. And so we want to thank those members, Rob Abbott and Richard Coachelli, but thank you for supporting our community, because without gifts like that, we can't make some of this happen, so.
Our pleasure.
Thanks very much. Okay.
Okay.
Great. And thanks for calling us nice. I love that.[1324.26][1324.26](laughter) It may be. No, I'm just teasing. Okay. Well, that's great. Well, thanks so much, and we are going to move right into Kim Evans. And I'm not sure, just Kim coming up? Okay? Great. About downtown Gravenhurst's future.
Sorry, I'm no fuss. I don't have slides, don't really have time for slides, so, but I appreciate you all being here and listening to what I have to say. And if you want me to email you some points afterwards, I'm happy to, because I know 10 minutes, I won't even speak for 10 minutes, but it's kind of a lot in a short amount of time. So for those of you that don't know me, I'm Kim Evans, and I own Blooming Muskoka with my husband, which we bought in 2022, just post-COVID. Our business has been operating on the Main Street of Gravenhurst for 20 years now. So that's pretty exciting. I'm also accompanied by Emily Dursley. She's a property owner and business owner of Relish, and she's been there since 2008 on the Main Street. Our goal here today is to encourage a conversation about the future of downtown and how the next five, 10, 20 years plays out for this town. In the past four years, sorry, I'm not great at microphones either, apparently, we've seen a number of businesses close, definitely more closures than openings, good people, good entrepreneurs that, you know, had their, their best thought in mind that, that didn't make it here. And as a newcomer, my knowledge of what's happened in the past is pretty limited and what goes on in this town, but I have been told tales of like a wonderful, thriving downtown Gravenhurst that was a great place to be in the past. So I hope that together we can move back to that. And this was a hard winter for, I think, all of us, obviously, for many reasons, and also on the Main Street, our walk-in business pretty much dried up. I'm super glad that I service a number of people from outside of our community with orders coming in online and over the phone, because I know if I had to rely solely on walk-in business, it would definitely be more of a challenge for me. Emily, when she opened her business eight years ago, in the winter, she would see a 30% decline. Of course, that's to be expected where we are with so many seasonal residents. This past winter, she saw a dip of 70% in her sales. And that's concerning. She employs six people in this town, six locals, and really, people renting or owning on the Main Street can't afford to stay open all year if we don't have the walk-in business. So it's certainly concerning for all of us. Costs are rising. Obviously, we have ongoing construction, which will impact us more next year. So yeah, we're here as business owners, just asking you to start a conversation to help the future trajectory of this downtown. We need an actionable plan. We need some ideas. We need some, some, yeah, a plan to solve some ongoing issues, and then a plan to stir on some new economic growth, once we've, you know, addressed some of those issues. So I think that there's always been this like glimmer for Gravenhurst. People get excited to come here. There's certainly no real reason why there's a lack of economic activity. We have location, convenience, beauty, all of that in our favor, such a great place to be in. I know that all of us do feel that living here, for sure. And I think that if we did have a plan to make some changes, it would really be a win for everybody, for businesses, for residents, for property values. All of us are really going to benefit from new economic growth, for sure. And I used to live in Collingwood, and Heidi and I actually had a conversation about Collingwood, and they, 10 years ago, looked much like our Main Street, and now they've just been named the happiest place to live. They have all these new, exciting businesses coming, and it's really a great place to visit. So, yeah, so we simply needed a plan to encourage business on the Main Street. So my thoughts, of course, because they spend a lot of time on the Main Street, I've seen a lot of entrepreneurs come and want to open a new business. I've heard of a bookstore, another restaurant, a clothing store, that have shown interest in the town. The issue is that there's nowhere for them to rent. It's a problem that we shouldn't technically have. According to my math, walking up and down the Main Street, we have 61% of our Main Street level retail spaces are either vacant lots, that they're empty storefronts, or they're retail spaces being used unlawfully as residences. There's also the issue, we have a lot of appointment-based businesses, which of course are important to our town, however, doesn't encourage walk-ins and visitors. In the next 10 years, we're going to see a major turnover. We're already seeing it in the property ownership on the Main Street. Many of our business owners are getting ready to retire. Many of our property owners are approaching the age that they're making plans for the future. And now, we're, we're now seeing, I'm sure you've, that you know, and you've seen a number of properties up for sale, and there's going to be more. So this is the time for us to like start the conversation, to make some impactful changes, to tighten up some bylaws, and to ensure the town returns to a bustling, fun place to shop and spend time. Now, of course, we always hear about our neighboring towns, Bracebridge and Huntsville, that they're thriving, and we should be asking them, you know, what contributed to their successes. Somehow vacant lots need to be rebuilt or sold with a requirement to build. As it stands, allowing these property owners to pay the least amount of tax because of their valuation isn't fair to the town. Sorry, I've just lost my, my spot here. Yeah, certainly, other towns have faced this issue of vacant lots, and there must be some solution there. We also have a real issue of main-level commercial space being occupied as residential units, and it's obvious that no business goes on there. These situations need to be identified and remedied. Our vacant, empty storefronts, some of which have been empty for as long as I've been in this town, need to be addressed, and how do we ensure that landlords are renting the spaces? I know it's like a long laundry list of things we need to address here. And the use bylaw, which as of now only restricts real estate to open a new storefront, needs to expand to include other appointment-based and professional services. While these businesses are needed, we need to encourage more business that encourages people to visit us. And apparently, we're already talking about this later on today, but our property standards bylaw needs to be looked at and tightened up. Peeling paint, waterlogged paper covering windows, and otherwise unkept properties are an eyesore for our residents and our visitors. I also think that Gravenhurst should require a minimum amount of days to be open for the year for all retail in this town, wharf, downtown. Closed storefronts only discourage shopping. Your retailers cannot afford to rent and stay open all year round when there's no business in the winter. And if we continue on this trajectory of businesses closing... to be looked at and tightened up. Peeling paint, waterlogged paper covering windows, and otherwise unkept properties are an eyesore for our residents and our visitors. I also think that Gravenhurst should require a minimum amount of days to be open for the year, for all retail in this town, Wharf, downtown. Closed storefronts only discourage shopping. Your retailers cannot afford to rent and stay open all year round when there's no business in the winter. And if we continue on this trajectory of businesses closing and not being replaced with new businesses, we're going to be like Port Carling or Balla, where there really isn't a lot of stuff happening in the wintertime. That's the first part. But if you do opt to make changes, of course, how do you do that? And if you tighten up some rules, how do you make sure that those new rules are enforced and taken out? Because if there's really no enforcement, then, you know, it's kind of a waste of time for us all to be talking about this. And I myself was pretty surprised to discover that, as many towns do, we operate on a complaint-based bylaw enforcement model. And I asked around many people that I know, and lots of people actually didn't know that. They kind of thought that bylaw was out there, you know, with their best interest in mind all the time. But yeah, many people were not aware that the enforcement of bylaw infractions happens only when a member of the public sees enough problems to go out of their way to log an official complaint, of course, with the exception of parking. A change in bylaw patrol and enforcement, allowing your officers to start investigations in addition to complaints from the public, would likely mitigate some of these problems. These issues are in plain sight, and they can't be argued in many cases. We all want the same outcome. We all see the beauty here. And I think that now is the time to make a plan to ensure a prosperous future for our town. Gravenhurst needs your economic leadership to grow. I thank you all for your time today, and your energy throughout your time on council. And I'm happy to try to answer any questions you might have for me.
Okay, thank you, Kim.
You're welcome. Thank you, Heidi.
I appreciate you coming today. Yeah, no, I think, no, there, like you said, there's some things that are coming forward in the property standards bylaw. It, I would suggest that we do maybe need to do a better job of letting people know that they need to complain. And I think part of the reason that, and I'm talking out of turn, we do have our staff here that would be able to answer it. But it's, I think, in part, it's that we don't have the resources to go out. We've got, we've got a lot of enforcement to do already, so that would depend on resources. So, but I will open the floor. Thank you for coming. I appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
I think there was some note-taking, and I would suspect that you can expect, you know, for us to put our heads together and see, you know, what we can come up with after the property standards bylaw goes through today, and where we land after that. But certainly some interesting concepts. And we have actually talked about a vacancy tax, because it was part of last year's budget discussion, and only Ottawa and Hamilton have one right now. And apparently, not apparently, but it is being challenged.
Yeah.
So there is some legal, some legalities involved with that. Anyway, saying that, I'm going to ask counsel if there are any questions for Kim. Counselor Johnston.
Thank you, worship. I have two questions and a comment for Kim. But before I do that, I wonder if I might indulge on you. Just a question. I know you don't like doing things on the fly, but my question is simply this. Kim and her colleague have suggested we need a plan. And I wonder, how would we generate staff providing a plan about developing a plan? You know what I'm saying? The very basic. How would we help develop a plan? That's, I'll leave that with you, your worship.
Funny you say that.
Not really.
We, look, because Kim and I had met ahead of time, we were trying to see if there was going to be an appetite to bring something forward. However, we pre-discussed it with staff to see what that would look like. So I thought we'd let the discussion go, and then the mover could move it, if so. So, and that's not on the fly, Counselor Johnston, because it was thought of ahead of time. Nobody's being sprung on. So, Counselor, was that everything, or?
No, no.
Okay.
It was just for you, your worship.
Oh, okay, so you're not, okay, go ahead. Yep, go ahead, Counselor Johnston.
Thank you for being here.
My pleasure.
And I met you on the Main Street, with the mayor, by the way. And so, my, I don't like doing this. We've got to get longer mics.
It's all good.
I have a longer neck. I don't like that either. I don't like looking at that person. So my two questions, Kim, is, and you don't need to necessarily answer them right now. I can't see.
Thanks.
My two questions are, you mentioned that Collingwood had a similar problem, and they have turned it around. So I wonder if, at some point in time, you could share with the staff or with us about some of the things that they did.
Yeah.
Perhaps part of our developing a plan, of a plan, could be to contact that municipality. That's number, number, number one. Question number two, is I think her worship has answered that, and that is, what can we do? How can we, how can we provide something now, as a result of your presentation? And the positive comment I want to make is this, I hope it's positive. At least it's a start. I'm on Muskoka Tourism Marketing Board. Last year, we had a banner year. We have a new executive director, and she's very, very good. But we had a banner year in terms of people coming into Muskoka.
Right.
And we expect this year to have even a 25% or more jump over that.
That's great.
Because of what's happened in Trumpland. A lot of our, a lot of people that traditionally have gone to the US, Ontario residents and others, are no longer going to the United States. And we've targeted those people, come to Muskoka.
Yeah.
And a lot of Americans are going to come up for the first time into Muskoka. So we're expecting a banner year, and hopefully that will translate into some, at least some looks and some business for you and your colleagues. It may be the start of something. So I just wanted to leave you that.
Thank you.
There's a positive glimmer out there.
There's always a glimmer.
Yes. Thank you very much, Kim.
Okay, I'm going to go over to Counselor Jorgensen.
Thank you, your worship. I'll look at the screen there to see, Ms. Evans. I can't help but think, sitting here, that, you know, this, this sounds like a discussion for a BIA. And I'm just wondering, you know, what, what's your, what are your thoughts on the demise of the BIA, and why that all happened? And is that not the logical mechanism to deal with this type of issue?
Kim?
Thank you. I was the last standing board member of the BIA. Yeah, literally the last one to show up to a meeting. And I'd like, the problems in the BIA, there were a few. But the biggest problem was, we didn't have enough business owners to show up. As businesspeople, we are doing our jobs. We're, you know, supporting our families, going to work every day. We have kids, we have all of that. And for us, then, when there's only five people showing up, when half the meetings, we can't even get a quorum, it's impossible to make positive change. And so if we have more business owners in our downtown, then I do think that we can expand and make the BIA great. But as it stands right now, and has it, as it has stood since I got here, there's just simply not enough people to make it happen.
Okay, I'm going to go over to Counselor Strength.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have prepared a resolution with the Madam Clerk. But I'd like to get some sort of clarification. Counselor Jorgensen has talked about the BIA. In my first term on council, we did have the downtown revitalization. And it does, in some of the conversations that I've had, it says that, as is the BIA still exists, so does the downtown revitalization. So I'd like to know what the, what, is that something, is that what, I'm trying to come up with the right words. Is that the road or the avenue that we should be going? Is not necessarily the BIA, because we know that it's been perhaps not so successful. But do we need to resurrect the downtown revitalization? Because it worked, in my opinion.
I'm going to go to CAO Lucas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a big one, and probably difficult to capture. Almost back to Counselor Johnston's question about how do you start to talk about a plan to plan? Because you're right, you know, we've undertaken a number of initiatives downtown, the downtown revitalization strategy that resulted in our community improvement plan area. There was a streetscape and design guideline that came out of that as well, that's been implemented over the years. We've got an economic development strategy that was just approved earlier this year, I believe, last year. Amy is giving me one of these. That includes downtown initiatives as well. It also includes investment from a town resource standpoint, to try and revitalize the BIA, and get that sort of grassroots element of the program going as well. Because at the end of the day, there's, there's all kinds of stakeholders in the, in the success of the downtown. The town is one of them. You have the BIA, you have the Chamber, and, and others as well, that really fed into that downtown revitalization plan in the get-go. So, and of course, we also have directives out of the BIA dormancy decision to go and work on this stuff. So, lots going on, I think, in addition to some of the bylaw updates. Not that they're transformational, what is on the agenda here today. They're really about cleaning those bylaws up. But that gives us a bit more teeth to deal with some of the, and enforceability, to deal with some of the more legal compliance challenges that may be in play in the downtown as well, and well beyond the downtown as well. So, lots going on. What I would suggest is, if council wishes to see a report come back on, in essence, what it is we're doing, what some of the other options are, that the town can actually conduct or influence, that would be your next step. Whether that happens today, or next month, or whatever the case may be, is up to council. But that would really be the next step, to talk about any more planning that may be necessary versus what it is we're already, what we already have in place. So, not sure if that question was fully answered within that, but that's, that's my reaction, anyway.
Okay, so I'm going to go to Counselor Varney.
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. So, I guess I'm going back to Counselor Jorgensen's question, why the BIA isn't working. Well, when I had a shop on the Main Street, there were retail all along the BIA. So of course, we had 14 members sitting on our, on our, on the BIA, because we had so many retail people. And now, I mean, I can go back to when there were like 13 ladies wear shops in Gravenhurst, and now we have two. It's when the town allowed rent services into the Main Street. And I know that's changed now, but it's hard to get those services out, so that retail can come in. And we tried to extend the BIA area, but businesses don't want to be part of the BIA if they're like an electrical company, or if they're hydro, or whatever it is, plumbing. I mean, they don't want to, what's the BIA going to do for them? So I keep thinking, well, why can't we get the Chamber doing some of the things that the BIA did? Try and get the Chamber more on board with taking over the sidewalk sale, doing things that the BIA used to do, which brought people into town, which brought people to the town to see what we had to offer. And so I guess I'm not a question, it's just a comment that I think we really have to think about. Thank you.
I just want to clarify, we never, I don't think there was any intention that we allowed, the bylaw has never changed. We just, we just up until now have not disallowed certain services. Just so, we never said, I mean, the mark, so far, the market has set the, you know, the market has set the usage. So, just want to be clear that we, our policy never changed. So, I don't want that out there. Okay, so, who am I going to next? Counselor Hunter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. My question is about the service businesses, because I don't really have a clear idea of where they're supposed to go. Because we don't want them at the Wharf, and we don't want them on the Main Street. And I'm not sure that we have really a clear area of where they should go, because they are important as well. And I think they do bring, you know, some foot traffic, because people have an appointment, and then they stop for lunch and continue on. So I guess, I don't know if that's a question, or just, I'm just unclear of where, and I'm looking to Director Helford. I'm just unclear of where those services should go, because we still want them in Gravenhurst. We don't want them to leave our town. I guess I'll leave it there.
Director Helford?
Thank you very much, your worship, through you to the counselor. It's an excellent question, Counselor Hunter, and it's something that we kind of, we grapple with daily when reviewing zoning bylaw amendments, and just general land use planning. So, and that's part of the reason why we've taken a small incremental step in focusing on the most important, or what the public had, and different groups, BIA, et cetera, had focused in on real estate being a really focal one, of there being lots in the downtown, and not offering that retail experience. So we focused in on making that incremental change, knowing that through our official plan review, we're going to get right to that issue. So there'll be so much targeted engagement with the public, figuring where do we want that commercial use in our community. Generally, it's, you know, in behind, above, side streets, that type of thing, is generally where you'd want those. And we do have a number of, if you look at our official plan and the zoning bylaw, it's aspirational, right? So there's lots of residential homes. Think about the area behind Harvey's. A lot of those areas, and there are homes, but they're all zoned, like a commercial, gateway commercial. Because the future is that we're hoping that that will be more commercial in nature, offering, you know, plumbing, electrical, kind of, those kind of uses there. So we have to set the stage, and then hope as properties turn over, that they're, we're able to get that future, the community to that future state, without expropriation, you know, pushing existing homeowners out, that kind of thing. Because that's much more heavy-handed and not appropriate, right? So it's an incremental change, aspirational. So it's a very great question, and that's why we try to, the official plans are set for 20 years, so that we can have that time to help the community get to where it wants to be. And I'm really looking forward to all the great conversations with the public through the OP review, starting next year, and then the subsequent zoning bylaw review. Because this is the most important component of public engagement, are these policies. The official plan sets our future as a community, and sets us up for, you know, what we want to be. So, yeah, I'm excited to work with, with Kim and the folks that are interested in getting Gravenhurst to where we all think it is in our hearts, in, in actual, in, yeah, in the community's eyes as well, so.
Okay, Counselor Jorgensen?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, that, just, that question, I think I did ask, when we were talking about the Wharf as well, once before. But, you know, and a lot of this is public understanding of, of the official plan. For example, you know, there's, there's very few people who would realize that, for example, on Bethune, from Wynwood South, that's all a commercial area, that's filled with, with residential homes, you know, on, and many of them on Gull Lake. But that, that's another area that's, that's already been designated for, for commercial growth. And I think it's, a lot of it's, you know, that answers the question, I think, of where, where do we want to see these other things go? But a couple of things, I, and it may be, again, Director Helford to address this, but, or may not have the answers, but, you know, tools that we have to, you know, we've seen those vacant lots on the Main Street for, for so long now. What tools does a municipality have to try and get something to happen there? And tools to, you know, when we change bylaws to restrict service businesses, I mean, we have, you know, grandfather issue to deal with, that we can't, we can't really kick people out. So I guess it's, what's, what tools do we have? On top of that, the other question I have is, Counselor Strength brought up the downtown revitalization plan that was very extensive. And I'm just wondering if we have completed all the, you know, met the targets that were, were identified in that plan. Because I, as I recall, it was very good, and did, went a long way to, to improving the downtown at that time. And I know the committee was disbanded at some point, but did we really, I don't know if, I'd say, you may or may not have that answer, but did we, did we achieve what was identified in that plan? Similarly, you know, we have other plans that, that I think we do need to, you know, we look at, Mr. Lucas talked about the, you know, that the design features that were, were identified, that was another plan. We also have our active transportation plan, and that has a lot of items identified in it, and many of them to deal with downtown, in terms of traffic. it, and many of them to deal with downtown in terms of traffic easing or calming, and bike traffic and things like that, introducing bike traffic. So, we have a number of these plans out there. I guess it's, you know, where are we at with some of them? And/or perhaps, that's something that we need to hear at council here. Where are we with respect to things we have identified in the past? There's a lot in that question, but I don't know.
Yeah, and I'm going to jump in here, because I think that this is what we're going to ask. I mean, this is a great conversation, but we're not going to solve this problem here on the end of a deputation. We appreciate you coming. But the direction will be, please bring us these answers. Please, you know, we would like to hear this. I think, you know, staff have heard what it is that we're looking for. So, with all due respect, I don't think now's the time to hash this out. So, if you're okay with Director Helford not answering the question, and maybe we'll table the resolution. And I think that within the resolution, a lot of these answers will be discussed, and maybe we have a working session. I don't know what it looks like. It depends, you know, but I think that what we're asking for today is exactly that. What are the tools in place? What can work? What can't? So, not to solve it today. I think that's where I'm headed. Is that okay with you? Okay. So, Counselor Strength, I believe you had something? Okay, great. So, Counselor Strength is going to move. I need a seconder. Counselor?
Just waiting for my mic.
Okay.
Oh, there it is. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think that on, I've spent 25 years downtown. I spent some time on the BIA, so it's definitely on my radar. And the resolution before you, hopefully, will, you know, start working in the right direction.
So, without further ado, I'm going to read the resolution. It's moved by Counselor Strength, seconded by Counselor Johnston. Whereas the Economic Development Strategic Plan, as adopted by council, outlines the economic potential of downtown Gravenhurst, including a focus on perfecting the fundamentals of economic development, supporting the needs of local businesses, communicating clearly with the broader Gravenhurst community. And whereas council, through the annual community improvement plan, has made significant investments in the beautification and revitalization of the downtown core. And whereas the formal operation of the Gravenhurst Business Improvement Area was placed into dormancy for a period of three years, effective March 1st, 2025. Therefore, be resolved that the deputation from Kim Evans, RE Downtown Gravenhurst Future, be received, and that administration be directed to investigate and report back on regulatory tools that may be available to the town, including consistent business center zoning and hours of operation, as well as other municipal best practices, including the existing downtown revitalization plan and CP, Community Improvement Plan, that may be available to promote a vibrant downtown. So, I think that, you know, answers a lot of the questions without putting our staff on the spot, which you know how I feel about that. So, we can look forward to bringing that back at another time. So, council, without rehashing the entire discussion, does that meet the needs of everyone before I call the question? Everybody had an opportunity? Okay? So, I will call the question. Council, all in favor? Yeah, me, because my vote's gone. Oh, there we go. Okay, and so that carries. So, again, Kim, thanks for your, thanks for your presentation, and we look forward to, you know, having some community engagement at the next meeting, so, or not, I shouldn't commit us to the next meeting. You know, we just, future, at a future meeting. So, thanks very much. I know it's not easy to come up and make a presentation, so we appreciate you doing that. And thanks for your crowd for coming as well, so, thank you. Okay, so, you know what? It's 3:56, and I'm going to just take a four-minute break, if that's okay. Four minutes. Oh, no, it's three minutes. So, let's say, let's, well, let's still stick with four minutes. So, I'll see you back. Five minutes, okay. So, let's come back at 16:02, okay? So, we'll be back shortly. Okay, thanks so much.
Okay, as promised. Five minutes, perfect. Welcome back, thank you. And now, fresh off their appearance at the EnviroHub at the Porcarlin Community Hall, we invite Glenn Cunningham and Kristi Doyle from the District of Muskoka for Integrated Watershed Management. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. Let's see my deck.
Just fixing the way that you appear on the screen. Just be a minute. Kristi's so well-known, we can just go by Kristi like Rihanna. Okay, we almost got it all there. Okay, so we'll start from scratch again. Kick it off, Glenn, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you. Over the last few decades, there's been a steady increase in the frequency and duration of issues that we're facing in the region. We certainly have heard several presentations this afternoon about just that. These events are linked to a globally changing climate, and they take the form of flooding events, often causing extensive personal and public property damage. We're seeing risks, increased risks of wildfires. We're running into situations with economic stressors like inflation, changing and declining workforces. We're seeing declines in water quality, and struggles with housing and homelessness. As individuals dedicated to serving our communities, we're all facing these issues head-on, and they can feel overwhelming at times. I know that I work on a pretty small team, and we often feel that these issues are just too big to tackle. We recognize that in order to face these issues head-on, we must come together to support each other. And we're not going to be able to do that by doing things the way that we've done it historically. Integrated Watershed Management offers us an opportunity to look at addressing these issues in a more comprehensive way. At its core, IWM is absolutely collaborative, it is holistic, it's adaptive, it's evidence-based. It's about the environment, it's about the economy, it's about society. It's about working together to share knowledges, resources, and experiences to better the lives of all of those within the Muskoka River watershed. It's absolutely not about adding additional layers of bureaucracy, reducing or taking away the autonomy of individual municipalities, and it's not intended to result in additional financial strain on individual municipalities. In practice, integrated watershed management could look like efforts to align policies across the region, bridging economic programs within the region, and of course, sharing resources and solutions. It can eventually lead to a watershed management plan or a larger framework that directs actions within the watershed, but we're not at that stage yet. We're just at the beginning, and we need to take the first steps to come together for the betterment of the people that we serve. Today, the district has proposed an interim approach to having interested municipalities and First Nations communities come together at a staff level to begin discussing how we can work together, what issues should be addressed, and to investigate how we might address these issues at a more regional and collaborative approach. That's my presentation, so thank you. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Wow, that was fast, okay, that was great. So, Council, as you all know, there was a report in our package that is addressing this very thing, and rather than have questions at that time, we thought we would allow for questions at this time because we have the experts here. So, if you're thinking of a question at our report time, we would like you to ask Glenn and Kristi. And I see Randy's done Alina, you have a question?
I'm hanging back now, just to make sure that I don't, you know, let everyone else have their opportunity. But, just overall question, I mean, integrated watershed management for the Muskoka River watershed, but there are those of us, like myself, who don't live on the Muskoka River watershed, I'm in a different watershed. And I'm wondering if we're looking at these things throughout the district, that if we look at integrated watershed management, are we coming up with things that will apply to, for example, the Black River watershed where I happen to live?
Through you, Madam Mayor, the reality is, yes, the intention and the hope is that actions and best management practices, good ideas that we have for the Muskoka River watershed, will be applicable to other areas. And so, one of the best examples that I could give you of that would be floodplain mapping policy. So, we have floodplain mapping for areas within the watershed, but also other areas that are outside of the watershed, still within the district. And so, looking at how we can address issues with flooding, learning from what we know about how it's flooded in the past, where it's flooded in different regions, and how successful efforts have been to either abate that or mitigate that into the future, those are all lessons that we can learn and certainly apply beyond just the Muskoka River watershed.
Okay. Any other questions? Counselor Cairns?
Thank you, your worship, through you. Through the plan, I mean, is there something that we can do to help the people understand what they can do to prevent, you know, some serious problems with flooding and different things? Like, I know native planting is really important, I mean, is there other things that we should be doing as residents and communities that we live in the water? Is there things that we can safeguard to try to prevent, you know, these catastrophes that are happening?
Thank you for the question, and through the mayor. The, there are things that we can do. When it comes to some of these big floods, these big 100-year event floods, the best thing that we can do is limit the amount of development in areas that are going to flood. The reality is, the volumes of water that we're talking about in things like the 2019 flood are just so massive that there isn't one simple solution. We can't just dig a big hole and fill it up with water and then deal with it later. We can't, the water control structures that are here in the region, they're not designed to deal with flooding. They will allow us to manipulate water levels, but there's only so much that we can do with them. And so, one of the key things that we should be doing is learning more about how we can minimize the impacts of these events. And we can do that by things like, as I said, limiting the amount of development that are in flood-prone areas, also looking at maintaining and enhancing our shorelines. The more that we can have water maintained on sites or infiltrating into the ground on individual lots, the better, because then we're not passing the buck and having a problem with downstream.
Subsequent?
Subsequent, thank you, your worship. So, through that, I mean, the Love Your Lake program, which Gull Lake and Silver Lake did this year, it gave us some really, really great ideas on what to do, and how can we get those ideas out to the people who don't do the Love Your Lake program? Because it's an intense program, like those kids, or your students, or whoever is out there on the lake. And the reports that came back with the detail and the comments and the suggestions for the property owners were huge. And I know we didn't get a huge uptake on the final of it, and I'm wondering how we can encourage more people to partake in the Love Your Lake program, or to understand more about what comes out of the results from the Love Your Lake program.
Thank you for the question, it's actually quite timely. This, late winter this year, the district actually took over responsibility for delivering the Love Your Lake and the Natural Edge programs. And we did that with the intention of growing the programs. And so, at this stage, we're actually looking to bring on two additional summer staff to help expand those programs, because we couldn't agree more. We think the programs are fantastic, they really help to not only educate the public and landowners, but it helps to support them with really meaningful actions that they can take on their properties. I would highlight another program, the Natural Edge program, which is a really great kind of follow-up. The property assessment reports that come out of the Love Your Lake program are a wonderful tool for landowners, but the Natural Edge program takes it one step further, where staff will come out to individual properties and take a look around, do an actual planting plan, and put one together for the resident. And participating in the program has a small fee, but it also comes with a large amount of, or a favorable amount of planting stock and mulch and things like that to actually put the planting plan in place. So, there's quite a bit of support there for those programs, and as I said, that was the intention from the district's perspective, to build on those programs, because we see them as such a positive benefit for the members of the community.
Just a follow-up, your worship, through you. So, how would people be able to get in touch with the new program? How is that going to roll out? I haven't, I've heard about it, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it to the event last week, but I've heard about it, and I want to move on to the next step. And I know some other residents on Gull and Silver Lake do as well, so I just, what, how do they get in touch, or how will we move to the next step?
The best approach would be to simply go onto the district's website, there's a link to the program there, and that will put you directly in touch with staff.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Counselor, are there any other questions? I don't believe my eyes. Counselor Johnston, this is your thing, this is your, this is it, this is your big debut. I'm just teasing, but did you want to have any questions, or?
I must now.
You must, you must.
Thank you, your worship, for putting me on the spot. No, I had already pre-warmed my colleagues, pre-warned my colleagues, that I would not be talking today. And I said, I will be grinding my teeth, because it's just not a natural state for me. But no, the reason I didn't, your worship, was that all the things that Kristi and Dr. Cunningham have said, I'm very aware of. And I was just more interested in hearing what my colleagues had to say, so that's, I purposely stood back, but thank you.
No problem. I guess, for me, if there's nobody else, one of the questions that I have is, is how, like, when you hear about it, watershed management, I, you know, I'm still, I'm going to be quite honest here, I still don't know really what it means. Like, I know that it's about runoff, and it's about, you know, pollution, and it's about where does the water go, and all these things. But if you were to sum it up in, is it, like, in five words, let's say? No, but do you know what I'm saying? Like, we have a watershed, we have a watershed committee, we have watershed, and now we're going to have, we talk about it all the time. So, what's the best way to sort of get the, elevate it? Yes, thank you. And elevator pitch, what's your elevator pitch, I guess? Good one, good one, Counselor Jorgensen.
Thank you, it's a good question. And the reality is, is that, to a certain degree, the reason why it's often difficult to put a really five-word or a short answer together on what integrated watershed management is, other than kind of a lofty, you know, kind of arm-waving vague statement of it's a bunch of working together, it is a bunch of working together, but it's about identifying what the problems are that we can deal with on a regional basis. So, when we run into big extreme weather events, and we're dealing with the fallout of those, how do we learn as a region? So, this year, Gravenhurst experienced some pretty incredible events that, you know, the municipality did a fantastic job moving through. And so, one of the, if I might, one of the most simple approaches then is, how does the rest of the region learn from Gravenhurst, from these events? And how, when this happens in Huntsville, or Lake of Bays, or Algonquin Highlands, how do they learn from what Gravenhurst experienced, so that they don't have to go through any of the same pains that maybe Gravenhurst did, while you were trying to figure out, we've never done this before? What are we going to do? Highway 11 is closed for the second time, that kind of thing.
Yeah, well, thank you. Counselor Jorgensen?
Just, if I may, your worship, ask Mr. Cunningham about, the word watershed, does not, people get it in their minds that that means lakes and rivers, but in fact, the upland, the upland is actually what is shedding the water, right? So, it encompasses much more than just the lakes and rivers that people may think, because the word water is in there.
Absolutely, you're 100% correct. It's not just a focus on the aquatic environments, it's a focus on the environment in a very holistic way also. We would be looking, it's intended to focus on terrestrial and aquatic ecosystems.
Yeah, and I guess that was my point, like, when you think of watershed, you're thinking of traveling water and all of those things, so thanks for clarifying that. Okay, any other counselors? Well, always a pleasure to hear from the district, we always enjoy your presentations, and thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, so, that brings us to the end of our deputations, Counsel. Pretty good run, yeah. So, we're going to go into our consent agenda. It is moved by Counselor Johnston, second by Counselor Jorgensen, be resolved that the following consent agenda items be approved. Report Noise Bylaw, exemption 326 Bethune Drive North. Minutes, Gravenhurst Public Library Board, March 6, 2025. Minutes, Gravenhurst Public Library Board, April 10, 2025. Minutes, Accessibility Advisory Committee, April 17, 2025. And Minutes, Municipal Heritage Committee, April 22, 2025. Does anybody want to pull any of those for discussion later, new business? Okay, seeing none, so please vote on those. And that carries, thank you. And we are rolling right into Advancing Integrated Watershed Management Planning in the Muskoka River watershed potential next steps, report number DEV 2025-33. It is moved by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Cairns. Whereas, integrated watershed management, IWM, is a modern approach to environmental management which integrates information and decisions made to achieve collective watershed-wide goals. And whereas, management of the Muskoka River watershed requires coordination between the provincial government, regional, and local watershed municipalities, First Nations, and environmental stakeholders. And whereas, one of the next steps in bringing an IWM approach to the watershed is to form a Muskoka River watershed IWM staff working group. Now therefore, be resolved that report number DEV 2025-33, advancing integrated watershed management planning in the Muskoka River watershed potential next steps be received for information, and that the town of Gravenhurst supports in principle pursuing an IWM approach for the Muskoka River watershed. And finally, that administration be directed to participate in the establishment of an integrated watershed management accord. Director Halford?
Thank you very much, your worship. I just want to start off by thanking Manager Cunningham and Director Doyle for joining us here at our Committee of the Whole meeting today. It's always lovely to have district colleagues here. The delegation that you just heard from Manager Cunningham eloquently summarizes the integrated watershed management approach that has gained some steam as of late, and the approach to how this can be addressed within the watershed. So, the purpose of the report, which I will give full credit where credit is due, was a standardized report that all the municipalities, to a certain extent, are bringing forward, that Manager Cunningham prepared for us to bring forward as the experts in the field. So, we, the report that's before you today outlines the background of where we've been with integrated watershed, and where the goal is of where we hope to end up. So, of note is that each municipality, like I said, is bringing forward this report. So, the next steps associated with this, should Counsel pass the motion today, so there would be a meeting set up to talk about participation and next steps early in the summer months, and then the work would begin on refining an MOU, or an accord, or common issues that could be addressed through this joint task force, so to speak. So, that, I think summarizes it pretty well. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Director, appreciate that. Counsel, are there any questions? Even though I said, "Don't ask any." I didn't say, "Don't ask any questions," but are there any questions for Director Halford about the motion? No? Okay, so, Counsel, I'll ask for the question, all in favor? And that carries, thank you. Okay, so, moving right along. We have something near and dear to my heart. Clean and Clear and Updated Property Standards Bylaw, report number DEV 2025-34. Be it resolved that report number DEV 2025-34, Clean and Clear and Updated Property Standards Bylaw be received for information, and that the Community Standards Bylaw, number 2012-19, be repealed and replaced by the proposed Clean and Clear Bylaw. And finally, that the Property Standards Bylaw, number 2004-18, be repealed and replaced with the Updated Property Standards Bylaw. Director Halford?
Thank you very much, your worship. So, before you this afternoon, are refreshes of two major workhorses of our bylaws that the Development Services Team uses. As you mentioned, the Community Standards, now referred to as the Clean and Clear Bylaw, and the Property Standards Bylaw. The latter bylaw is, you know, getting up there in age, and was needed, a much-needed refresh for such matters as the inclusion of updated tenant-related provisions that reflect recent provincial changes, strengthen and updated wording, and clarity of definitions and consistency with those definitions in the sister bylaw, the Clean and Clear Bylaw. The Clean and Clear Bylaw, which is for much more minor property standards concerns, or property-related concerns, has also been updated to provide, again, that same clear and consistent definition between the two, inclusion of provisions for graffiti, which, believe it or not, was not in the other bylaw, and a better definition of naturalized areas to better support Counsel's recent notable and commendable efforts towards the Nomo May initiative, as well as the Bee City initiatives. Naturalized gardens, was, the definition of it was a little bit loose before, so we want it to be a little bit more intentional, a little bit more about pollinators, a little bit less about just letting weeds be prolific. So, not that that happens all the time, but we want to nip it in the bud. So, both bylaws will also be subject to, if Counsel were to approve these today, staff will then reflect those changes into the Amps Bylaw update, and then bring that forward to Counsel in July, so that we can implement these two bylaws through the Amps, making it much more efficient to do. So, that's it, in summary. The, it really was a, not a wholesale change, they are new bylaws, so there's not a track-change version available. However, the, nothing major changed, other than those two, you know, naturalizers, those things that I mentioned. It was really just about tightening up the wording and definitions, so that we can better enforce and have more success through the enforcement process by having clear and clearly understandable definitions in the bylaw. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so, Counsel, I think now we're going to, I realize the bylaws are on the Council agenda, which we're not there yet, but I trust everybody's read them, and if you have any questions about specific aspects of either the bylaws, I think now is a good time, as any, to discuss them. So, if there's any questions about anything specific in either the bylaws, I'll ask for that now. Counselor Cairns?
Thank you, your worship, I've been through you. So, I know a lot of people have now, with our, with our communities, community, I want to say Communities in Bloom, but it's brought on by Communities in Bloom, we started at the front yard garden program, the Daisy Awards. So, we have a lot of people now that have moved their backyard gardens to the front and alongside of boulevards, and I'm hoping that we can still continue in this bylaw, that they can still garden boulevards on their own property, actually, it's town property, but it's in front of their homes. And I just, I know we had a problem way back, and then we changed it, so we could have the boulevard gardens, and I just want to make sure that this doesn't make a change to those boulevard gardens, because a lot of people have spent a lot of money. I know there's some really beautiful houses on Sarah Street that has really done a great job in bringing the boulevard gardens. It includes some weeds, but those weeds are good weeds, they're not noxious weeds, so are we, you know, making sure that if we're, you know, if we have complaints, we let people know that they're, it's not a noxious weed, it's not something that's going to cause any problems. Ragweed is huge, there's a lot of ragweed in our community, and that is a problem. So, it's really hard to decipher sometimes what's ragweed and what's some of the native plants, because a lot of the native plants now look like weeds.
Director?
Thank you very much, your worship, through you to the counselor. Nothing in this bylaw would change any approach in that regard. The bylaw speaks to a definition of what a naturalized garden is, a naturalized area for the purposes of those participating in Nomo May, or having pollinator gardens. So, there's no change in terms of that. In terms of folks gardening on town property, it's not a concern, not an issue that we have dealt with of late, I haven't had any concerns that I'm aware of, or enforcement matters related to that, so I don't know that it's an issue.
I didn't think it was an issue, I just want to be sure that this bylaw doesn't change the way that people are gardening now. Like, they're gardening right from their house all the way to their road, and I just want to be sure that that doesn't have an impact with what's happening right now.
I'm going to go to Director Stacy, only because I know that that's his department as far as planting trees and things on the boulevards.
Through you, your worship, to Counsel Cairns. I believe the notion of planting and using the town's property for beautification needs to be reviewed, and Infrastructure Services, actually, in our work program this year, is planning on bringing something forward for Counsel to consider. While we don't have concerns with necessarily plantings on the boulevard, we do have concerns with stuff like rocks and ornaments that have been placed on the boulevard, that if we ever end up in a place like we did this winter, you know, bringing blowers and stuff, those things become projectiles. So, we will be coming, bringing a report forward, and maybe it'll provide some more clarity for you, Counsel Cairns, on what would be permitted and what would not be permitted for Counsel's consideration.
Thank you. Okay, anybody? Oh, Counselor Jorgensen?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot in here, the thing that...
The thing that, that strikes me the most is, and, and I do understand that a lot of this has not changed, it's, it's what's, what has been in, in the past as well, but the, there does not seem to be a distinction between rural properties and urban properties, from what I can, can see. A, a couple items in there, for example, um, I'm going to jump to the, you know, um, there's a few. Noxious weeds, as an example. I know noxious weeds is in, you know, really regulated by the province, for one thing, but the fact that, you know, if you have a whole bunch of thistles on, on a urban property versus out in, you know, your hundred-acre property out in Housie's Rapids, um, there's a big difference. And similarly, uh, there's provisions for, you know, piling of building materials and things. Again, if I have a pile of gravel on my property out in the middle of nowhere versus one sitting on, uh, Sarah Street, you know, it's going to, there's a big difference between those two, because, because pe- people out where I am wouldn't even know that I have a pile of, of stone on my property that I plan to use in, in time. So, I guess that, that's my question, is, is should we be looking at some kind of distinction? Because even though I understand it's complaint-driven, there's a big distinction between a rural property and, and right downtown in many cases.
Director Halford?
Yeah, thank you very much, and I, in my effort to be efficient and concise, I forgot to mention that Manager Ford is also here and, uh, to support and answer, uh, specific questions as well, so I apologize for forgetting to mention that you're here, uh, Manager Ford. Um, the, what I was, how I was going to answer that question was twofold. One, um, it's a complaint-based system, so the, the, the concerns we would get for, you know, piling of, of, um, materials, uh, in the urban end center would be much more, um, likely to happen than in the rural area, but there's also officer discretion as well in terms of, you know, where it's, it, the impact on other folks in, in the area. So, I think those are, that's how I would answer that, uh, and I'm getting a nod from, um, the manager as well. Um, the bylaw, uh, is meant to be concise and easily to, easy to implement while not being overly onerous, um, so, uh, that's the, that's what's presented here, so. And again, we're a complaint-based system, so, um, particularly as it relates to these, um, these types of matters, so, um, it's much easier to, the, the new bylaw through, uh, the new Clean and Clear Bylaw with having Amps as well, will make it much more efficient to address those smaller, more minor, um, concerns, and we're hoping that that will help, um, make some efficiencies on the team as well, so.
Counselor Strinkathai? Did I see your light, but then it's been turned off, or?
That's perfect.
Okay, great. I just didn't, I didn't know if you'd hit it by accident. Counselor Varney?
Okay, I'm turning my mic off.
Okay. Okay. Is there any other questions about these bylaws? Okay, so I have one. So, um, it's no secret that one of my pet peeves is, is parking on the front lawn, like people pulling right up on their front lawn, which, you know, in town looks pretty awful, if you ask me. Um, and so, one question that I asked is, you know how we have, um, we have, um, blitzes in the spring? Is there any way to do blitz? Because people really only have to be told once, right? Like, most people don't do it, they just don't think there's anything wrong with it. Maybe they've, maybe, you know, but to me, it's, it's like nails on a chalkboard. So, my question is, have we considered of making a list of things that we get our students to do, you know, once a year? Like, they do the sign blitzes in the spring, where they go around and take down all the signs, and is there, is there a list of priorities that's like low-hanging fruit? Because, in my opinion, this is what we do in order to make our town look good. Like, a lot of this is, what do we want our town to look like? So, um, and I know we're complaint-based, but, you know, and it comes down to, I mean, it comes down to watershed. Do we really want people parking on grass? No, we want them parking on, on proper parking spaces, right? So, I mean, they, they have to have parking spaces in order to get their zoning bylaws and all of this. So, is there, is there a list of things that are more like a high priority in all of this that we could influence maybe at this? At this? And then, one other point is, in this, it says unkempt. Okay? So, what I think is unkempt may not be what, what somebody else thinks is unkempt. I mean, we have an unkempt building uptown, and I, you know, I tried to shame them into fixing it uptown beside the Opera House when they came for their zoning bylaw for the sixteen units, and it still looks terrible. There's paper falling off in the window, the sign is half-hanging off, there's dust on the windows. Who's the decider of what's unkempt? Like, how, that's so subjective to me. So, I guess, can I be a dictator? No, I'm just kidding. No, I just think that it's, like, what's the level?
Uh, thank you very much, Your Worship, for the question. Um, so, the new bylaw does have a very clear definition of what state of good repair means, so that's going to help with that definition. Um, there's also, um, as I'm learning, uh, being responsible for, uh, bylaw services now, um, uh, the notion of officer discretion, they are, take extensive training on what that means and what would be defensible through the, um, through the, uh, enforcement process. So, that's where the expert who is our officers, our MLOs, uh, use that officer discretion, uh, when, when implementing it, and feeling that, and, and it's up to them to determine whether they ha- feel that they have enough evidence to move forward. So, uh, at the end of the day, it's about having a bylaw that's clear, so that we can then clearly articulate the, um, the problem, and then be successful through the enforcement process. So, it, it's hard to be successful if it's not clear what our standards are. So, that's the idea with this updated bylaw, to clear, clearly identify what our standards are. Does that answer your question?
It does. And I mean, this came up a little earlier, and I see your light is on, Counselor Cairn, so, um, I'll, I'll get, just finish my thought here. Um, so, we heard a lot about today about being complaint-based, and that things are complaint, complaint-based. Can we just put it out there as to why? First of all, the complaint process is pretty simple, and it's totally anonymous. So, I mean, I think we need to be pretty clear about that, but can you explain to the public at large why it is that we're complaint-based and, and what, why that is?
Absolutely. Uh, thank you, Worship. So, the, it's, it comes down to resourcing. So, we have, um, three full-time, two staff, two staff and a manager, so, and a very large, as you heard from Lexicon, and that's just the, Lexicon really is just a very small portion of the community, right? So, it's a very large area, uh, that we cover here in Gravenhurst, and, um, so, we can't be everywhere at once, so, um, the standard approach for lots of municipalities is to take, um, a proactive approach on certain things, um, like parking, uh, during, specifically during certain times of the year, because those are the, um, the most complaints, uh, that are received, but then, um, leaving it to the, the neighbors and the people in the community to report, uh, infractions or suspected infractions, and then we're happy to go out and respond. So, we do, um, thanks to our, um, media mic, uh, do, uh, try do an excellent job of, uh, encouraging and doing social media campaigns and information in the newspaper and that, uh, well, not the newspaper anymore, but our website and social media blitzes about what bylaws we have, um, and what the standards are. Burning bylaw is one that you see that we're proactive on. We've been trying to be a bit proactive on a couple things, dogs on leashes, different things like that, um, park, park bylaws and that. So, there are certain ones that we try to do proactive education on, and then, um, encourage folks to use our new, um, reporting tool through, um, cloud permit on our website. Uh, it's not that we feel that those types of concerns are any less important, it's just, we just, we want to hear from the folks that are witnessing it, because we can't be everywhere at once. Um, sometimes these things happen after hours, we only have, in the summer, we've got seven to seven. Um, staff here, seven days a week, seven to seven, but if things are happening after hours, we can't be everywhere at once. So, if people are, are taking down the information, filing it through the system, then we can go out and, and enforce based on that data, so, um, I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Counselor Cairns?
Thank you, Worship. Um, so, with officers' discretion going out, do we give them a warning first, or do we just go and we give them a ticket right away, or can we at least put a sign on their, if it's a vehicle parked, or if it's something? Are we putting, um, like, uh, you know, "Thank you, these are the, these are, um, these are the rules, look up this bylaw," or something, um, "Sorry, you park there next time," you know? Can we put those kind of notices on, rather than just giving people tickets? Because sometimes, unless they're in a, definitely in, like, a fire route, a corner, too close to the corner, you know, things like that. I just think that, you know, um...
Counselor Cairn, so, sorry, this is nothing to do with parking, so, other than...
Yeah, I was just going to say, parking bylaw, we'll talk about it in a minute. Yeah, this is...
I, I don't mean to cut you off, but there is a Parking Control Bylaw update on the next part of the agenda, um, so I don't want to wade into that conversation.
We were talking about officer discretion, sorry.
Yeah.
Then, my other question then would be, um, so every, under, and maybe I should bring this up at the bylaw stage, because it's eight point one, it says, "Every owner, occupant of property or land shall maintain the property or land free from any nests of bees, wasps, hornets, rodents, vermin, insects, and other pests." Well, now, with Bee City, they're encouraging us to harbor bees on our property, bugs, bees, all that, and so that's going to create a difficult problem. I know, um, my neighbors have a bee, uh, a beehive sometimes, they, um, and there's, um, wasps' nest, well, I'm certainly not going to take down a wasp's nest, um, it's very dangerous when you have one that, that goes on your property. So, I'm just wondering, um, you know, with, with the encouragement of, of trying to bring bees back to our community and make sure that we have them, in this it says, um, that we, we're supposed to keep it free of, and I'm worried that, you know, we're not going to be doing the little bee houses and things like that to encourage bees.
Uh, Your Worship, I may turn this question to, uh, Manager Ford, but I would say there, uh, there's a difference between bees that are for that purpose and, and vermin, but, or, um, insects that are negative.
I think we can all say that it's about safety. I mean, if there's kids running around and there's a hornet's nest, you know, and I think, anyway, but go to, uh, go to Manager Ford. Thank you.
Thank you, and through you. Um, to respond to the question, with regards to complaints and officers using their discretion, we, once the complaint is received, the officer does go out, we do a full-on investigation. If the concern is determined to be valid and that it is a life-safety, um, concern, or if there is, um, for instance, we just recently went through the snowstorm and ice storm, where we've had a lot of downed trees on properties, neighbors calling in their concerns of neighboring properties still having, um, dead limbs that are overhanging on to their properties. It's not our direction for them to remove the tree themselves. Our direction is through an order under the, uh, provincial legislation, uh, being in order to comply for property standards, which would essentially say that they're to obtain somebody who is qualified to remove that tree and/or a bee's nest that is cause, that is cause for concern. So, if it's a wasp nest that's not supposed to be there, or they don't have their beekeeper's license, and the neighbors or somebody in the area has put in a complaint, then that would be why we would be attending, and that would be why we would be moving forward with that. If it's legally established, of course, we would not be moving forward.
Okay. I'm going to go over to Counselor Varney.
Uh, thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. So, some of my constituents have complained to me in the town with, um, properties that have boats and cars and campers on the property and garbage, and, um, and they are actually afraid to fill out the complaint form, because they think that the neighbor is going to know who it is that's doing the complaint. I'm just wondering if we can encourage our media mic to put something in his media to, to reinforce to the public that if they want to do a complaint, they realize that this is not going to come back on the neighbor. Because I'm, I'm, I keep telling them, "No, that bylaw is not going to come back and, and let that person know who made the complaint." So, I think if it comes out on, in the media as well, that, that, that this has been discussed, and, and it might help me as a counselor for Ward One, because there are a lot of properties in Ward One that should be cleaned up. So, I mean, I've actually sent in a couple of complaints myself, so, anyway, thank you.
Yeah, I, I think that that can't be said enough. I, I would, I would like to say that they, they might be able to figure it out, you know, unfortunately, they might come to that conclusion on their own, but we certainly don't share that information. Is that right, Director Halford? Okay. So, um, we can't say that, that, again, the neighbors wouldn't be able to put two and two together, um, but, you know what? It's, it's, it is what it is. It's not easy to solve conflict sometimes. Uh, Counselor Jorgensen?
Thank you, Worship, and, um, the, the, um, paragraph that, that Counselor Cairn's brought up regarding bees, wasps, hornets, again, it's a perfect example of what I'm talking about in terms of rural versus urban, from the standpoint, you know, I have a problem with a bylaw that I know I can't comply with it. It's impossible. Of course I have bees, wasps, and hornets on my property. So, this is the type of thing that I've, where I have a problem that, you know, I knowingly cannot comply with this bylaw, and it just doesn't make sense to me that that's the case. So, I, I still think I'd like to see at, you know, I, I'm, in general, I support what is trying to be achieved here, but in, in particular, I, I think the difference between rural and, and urban is not recognized in this type of bylaw.
Okay. Um, to that, I'm going to involve in debate here a little bit. I, I would say, we're not talking about somebody driving around looking for a hornet's nest hanging in the back forty of your house. We're talking about somebody who has a hornet's nest that's maybe in their tree, that's next door to the kids that are walking to school every day, that's causing a threat or a safety issue. I think that, that, you know, we're not looking for, to send out people for trouble, and somebody's got to call on you and say, "By the way, they've got a hornet's nest." This is about pr- being practical and being, and being safe. You could have one by your mailbox at the, at the, you know, driving by, and pedestrians out for a cottage stroll, they got a kid that is allergic to bees. So, without it applying to your neck of the woods, we can't do anything about it. So, I don't know, I think, I think we're being a little like, I think we're being a little over the top here. I, I mean, again, it's all based on complaint, and it's about safety, and it's about those sort of things, so I don't, I, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying loud and clear, but it's not like we're driving around looking for hornet's nests out in Housie's Rapids. So, anyway. And, and I would say to Counselor Cairn's point, that if there was a bee's nest, there's beekeepers that'll come and get it. They'll, you know, they'll come and get those bees, right? Right? Do we know any beekeepers? Um, okay, I'm going to go, was that it? Somebody else had their light on? No? Okay. Oh, Mr. Lucas did. He was going to say some...
Uh, somewhat, somewhat along the same lines, in that I, I think unless we were to create, uh, in essence, zones within this bylaw, which was never really the intent at this point, uh, I think in the meantime, the way that we look at this is that there's sections in here that are more applicable to an urban context versus a rural context, and several sections that you'll, you'll likely find more prevalent in those contexts. So, so somewhat similar, that this exercise, I, the, the bylaw won't be perfect, almost like it's assigning a planning policy to an entire province. Um, it's, it's similar, trying to attach a set of rules to an entire town is, is, and, and capturing all of those contexts is rather challenging, so, uh, similar, similar suggestion, but different words.
Probably more rational. Okay. So, Counselor, are there any other questions about this bylaw? So, we, um, again, I'd like to get to the bylaw stage and just read through the bylaw, so, um, if there's any questions, now would be the time. Okay. So, with that, we're going to vote to receive the report. I was looking for the "no" there from right. I was looking for the no there from right. Okay, thank you, counsel. Now we're going to go into the parking control bylaw, report number DEV 202535. Be it resolved that report number DEV 202535 RE parking control bylaw update be received for information, and that the proposed update bylaw be posted on the town's website for public comment. And finally, that administration report back to committee on the results of the consultation and present a final bylaw for consideration. So, just to be clear, we're not voting on a bylaw tonight. Director Halford?
Thank you very much, your worship. That is correct. So I'm very happy to be at the point where we're presenting the updated parking bylaw for council to receive, and then we'll, we'll collect comments over the next couple of weeks on it, and then come back to you with a, the final version. This has been a huge undertaking getting the bylaw to this point. So I did want to thank Manager Ford for leading the effort. The, there was a group set up from economic development, fire, infrastructure planning, and bylaw to go through this, no shorter, no, no less than five existing bylaws, plus all the amending bylaws, plus all of the schedules, trying to pull all of that together and make it into one concise document that you have before you this evening was a task. So that is part of the reason why what you have in front of each day. The, the main reason that we're here this evening are the, there's been two specific resolutions that you'll remember you passed and gave direction to staff to address in the parking bylaw, one of which is the removal of the bus stand provisions on First and Harvey Street, and then to look at changes to the three-hour parking around the senior center. So while we were making those changes, we couldn't help but take some opportunity to, to combine all of the, the 20-year-old, some of them are more older than that, bylaws, into one to try and make the, the enforcement and the understandability of it clearer. So the most notable change that you'll see, in addition to those two matters being considered, is the proposal, staff are proposing to remove the blanket three-hour parking restriction in, in town, and only having that three-hour parking restriction in the downtown core area. So the senior center would be part of the, part of, part of the town where a 12-hour parking would be allowed. So as a community grows and changes, that's the perfect opportunity to look at these older bylaws, see, are they working for the intended purposes? And if not, let's, let's consider some changes. So that, staff are recommending that we move to just three-hour parking in the downtown core. So as I mentioned before, we'll collect feedback over the next couple of months, and I know that this, or a couple of weeks, sorry. I know that this is something that a number of counselors have expressed, that your constituents have reached out to you about. So we're really looking forward to you reaching out to those folks, letting them know of this proposed change, and, and seeing if this is something that addresses their concerns. And then we'll come back to the July meeting with a recommended final bylaw for, for consideration. So I'll leave it there, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And, and Manager Ford's here also to answer questions.
Okay. Counselor Cairns?
Thank you, your worship, and through you. And thank you, Ms. Ford Bickers. I know this was a tedious task. I was part of it for years with the parking. And I'm thinking, these are great, these little maps. If we could recreate these maps, on here it says all, all municipal parking is free, other than the, the, at this time on these maps, it said one hour, then we have some that say two hours, and now we have the three-hour limit. So these are really great maps. It shows, so when people are coming into town, it also shows them where our parking lots are in the town, where they can park their boat, or their bus, or whatever it might be that when they come into town. So I just want to say huge thank you. I've had a lot of, of concern in the parking issue. The reason why I brought up parking earlier was because the mayor had mentioned about parking on front yard lawns, on people's front yards. So that's the only reason why I brought up the parking at that time. I think that this is, is going to be a great plan, that, that the information getting out to the public. One of the questions I have, and on the actual tickets, it says no parking on town boulevards. And I was looking through here, and there are several boulevards throughout our community that people do park on. So Bethune Drive on both sides, there's boulevards. First Street, there's some boulevard, no, John, John Street, sorry, there's boulevards on there as well, like in front of the Curling Club. So, and it says they will be signed if there's no parking. So will those areas of boulevards, to include Bethune Drive, John Street, First Street, will they be, the boulevard parking, will that be lifted, or will there be signs so that if people are want to park at the Curling Club, which there's very little parking there now, but they've always parked on the boulevard across from the Curling Club, and there's, there's, if you go up to the Bethune House, exactly in front of the Bethune House, those parking spots, if you look straight down the street, you'll see it's a boulevard, it's not actually parking spots. But in front of Bethune House, it is parking spots. So I just want to be sure that we're very clear that if someone does park on a boulevard, that they're not going to be ticketed, or if they don't know. But I think there was a mention of, of letting Mike, our media gentleman, get the word out to people. I think it would be less of an impact to a lot of people, a less anxiety for a lot of people if they, if they can know. Now, it was mentioned to me, you know, when you go to different municipalities, first thing you do is look at their parking bylaws. Well, I've never done that before. I've never even pulled up a parking bylaw from anywhere. I just see if it says no parking, I don't park there. So, but if it's an open spot, I would park there. So I'm just, I just want to be sure that we let the public know, and I wonder about the, the boulevards.
Thank you, Counselor Cairns, and through you, Mary Lorenz. Again, it comes down to officer discretion with most of our, our bylaws. Infrastructure is in place for municipal boulevards. They can include grassed boulevards in front of a residential home, or even in a downtown core area, dependent on the landscaping. They can include sidewalk boulevards with a curb, or with a rolled curb, that a car that parks a vehicle up on a rolled curb or a curbed piece of infrastructure can actually damage. They weren't built to sustain that type of weight. Somebody who has a front yard boulevard that is grassed up to the roadway may not appreciate somebody parking on the grass that they maintain on behalf of the municipality. Therefore, if they call in a complaint that there's somebody parked on their boulevard, then we have every right, under our bylaw, to enforce that. If that person wishes to challenge that ticket, and they believe that they're in the right and they have the ability to do that, then they can take that to the courts, and they can challenge it through the courts, at which time a justice makes the decision whether or not our bylaw clearly identifies that that's a violation.
Counselor Cairns?
Thank you. Just, but a question of a gravel boulevard, not one that has a curb. So in front of, for instance, in front of the Curling Club, there's a gravel boulevard, then there's a patch of grass, and then there's a sidewalk. So are they permitted to park on that boulevard, the gravel boulevard that is next to the street? Now, I know in the wintertime, it can be difficult because they move, you know, those boulevards get filled with snow. But in the summertime, and, you know, earlier on in the year, when there is no snow or any hazards, can they still park? Like, that's one of the areas that I'm really concerned about, because we have lots of curlers, and right now, we have a lot of pickleball players. And there's a boulevard right there, and that's where they're parking. So I'm just wondering if that is going to be okay, or are you going to be able to sign that area, so there is no parking, if that's not allowed? Because I'd, I'd hate to see people get tickets there again. Thank you.
Director Halford?
Thank you. So we're not, the, the bylaw that's before you this evening is not changing any of those types of spaces. Whatever is currently in the bylaw is what was carried over. The only changes that we have made were related to those items that we talked about, and just consolidating the bylaws together. So any specifics about whether, I think we're talking about some specific areas, those would not be changing, whether they're allowed to park there or not now. We can look into that, and I think we can offline this conversation, if, if you have some concerns. Although we did do, the, the students went out and did an inventory of the signs associated with the bylaw to identify, before we brought this forward to you, to identify where signs were that they shouldn't be, and vice versa. So we'll hopefully try and get that tidied up as well, now that we have a clear bylaw to work from. So if there are specific issues related to that, we, we can get it sorted. But not anything, the parking in front of the Curling Club was not specifically changed, whether it was allowed there or not. And I think we can have an offline conversation regarding that specific matter. Wherever you'd like to talk about, we're happy to chat about.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions about this parking bylaw? No, I, I just wanted to ask a question, because, again, we're not giving, safety is the biggest concern, right? Like, you know, we're not looking to go around and, and cause problems for ourselves and give tickets out unless there's a concern, unless somebody's in a fire zone, unless somebody's in a, you know, I mean, one that comes to mind is right at the, whenever there's a farmer's market, there, people are parked in, in the turning lane, on, you know, on Bethune, they're in the right-hand turning lane. So I just want to make it clear, I think, how many tickets did we give out last year? Like 15? Like, not, I mean, not a ton of tickets. Or during the, the Tall Pines Weekend, I think there was a big discussion about it. Like, we don't give out a lot of tickets, generally, do we? Like, but they're not, but they're not for not, you know, people are parking incorrectly. Is that right? Like, yes, okay. So it's not like we're going out and looking for trouble. We're just making sure everybody's parked safely and that traffic is not impeded, generally. And I'm getting a big nod from the manager. So thank you. I think safety is important. Safety never takes a holiday. So, Mr. Lucas?
Yeah, the, another, another big input into where resourcing is, is put as far as parking enforcement is council directives. So where council has prioritized, you know, I think there was a few years there where the, the length of time of parking in the downtown core changed several times based on conversations with the BIA. So there's been a sort of a historic direction that parking is one area where we do proactively enforce, because it's been identified as an issue. We want to see movement in, in, of traffic and or sort of movement of parking spots in the downtown core, based on keeping spots open for downtown businesses, that sort of thing. So there, there's different priorities that have been provided over the years from council, in addition to the health and safety matters that, that you've identified. So I just wanted to clarify that piece as well.
I'm excited to see the feedback that we get. So again, this is about the feedback, right? So we're just approving the bylaw to be advertised for feedback? So I think that's really exciting. Like, to Counselor Johnston's earlier point about getting feedback from people, I think this is important. So, okay. Well, one more thing, CEO Lucas?
Yeah, just on that, if council's reaching out to constituents, I think the context of this review is important, as you're, you know, educating folks on what the purpose of this, this exercise was, which was to consolidate, implement previous council directives. It wasn't necessarily to blow up the parking control bylaw and rethink every street and regulation within the bylaw. That really wasn't the exercise. So the context of the engagement is important, I guess is what I'm saying, as opposed to fully exploring this, which would be, which would likely take years to accomplish.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's great. Thank you very much. So we are going to vote on the, the motion before us? And that carries. Thank you. Okay, so moving right along, it's moved by Counselor Johnston, second by Counselor Jorgensen. Be it resolved that report number RAC 202504 RE YMCA agreement be received for information, and that administration be authorized to enter into and sign a five-year agreement with the Gravenhurst YMCA. And finally, that the, that administration be authorized to renew the agreement for an additional five years pending a satisfactory review by both parties. Director Patterson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. So the report before you today is coming off of our two-year agreement we had previously with the Y coming out of COVID. So that agreement has now ended, and we are looking to move into a longer-term agreement with them. We, over the last several months, we have been negotiating back and forth what this agreement is going to look like. And we're hoping to strengthen the arrangement we have with the YMCA through these negotiations. Particularly for the town side, we identified the need to better define the wellness center as part of the operation for the community that the Y is managing for, for the town. And we're trying to take a position to minimize the financial risk that the town is taking on with, with the operation. Through the negotiations, we have discussed identifying an adequate level of subsidy for the operation to help manage our financial risk. As you'll recall, we came to council to have the, the operating grant fee capped at $30,000. So that has been agreed upon. We are hoping to improve operational efficiency and effectiveness with the Y as well, including expanding their public offerings during Christmas break, March break. So allowing more residents to be able to use the Y without having a membership and doing more operations for the community. Better aligning our programs that are offered between both us and the Y. So we do offer recreation programs. Ours are going to be more focused on leisure or unique programming that the YMCA normally doesn't operate. So we're going to continue down that path, as well as addressing, helping them address the low retention rate they have by expanding different opportunities. You may have seen the recent campaign they did for Stay Fit in the Summer. So they're trying to target some more seasonal people to start attending the Y as well, so trying to help them get, get different membership coming through. And definitely working on increasing clarity rules and responsibilities on both sides. So negotiations have been going well. We've reached an agreement. It has gone to their lawyers, so they're having it reviewed currently. And then if this gets approved today, then we'll, we'll continue to go through with an agreement for them. Financial impact for us, aside from the $30,000, that would be the max for their operating grant. And just so you know, for 2024, in working with them, leading into this agreement, they only asked for $20,000 when we had, I believe, 60 in the budget. So they are working diligently to try to minimize their financial risk on our side. Our cost outside of that is $320,000, but that is covering the utilities. So we cover heat, hydro, water. Any capital assets that are brick and mortar are ours as well. They are responsible for their own capital replacement costs for their operations. And that will continue in the future, including all of their equipment. So at, at this point, going back and forth with them, trying to mitigate the risk and improve this, the facility for the entire community, we're at a point where we feel comfortable going into an agreement with them for five years, reviewing it with them annually, making sure we're still on the same page, things are going well, making corrections along the way, and hope to continue the arrangement with them. I will say they did ask in this round of negotiations to reduce the transition period if either party decides to terminate the agreement from one year to six months. if either party decides to terminate the agreement from one year to six months. So we have agreed to that, but they did have that ask as part of the negotiations. I'll leave it there if there's any questions.
Okay, Counsel, are there any questions for Director Patterson? Counselor Jorgensen?
Thank you, Worship. So to be clear, the $30,000 operating grant is, is the cost to the town for having the Y manage that facility outside of the utilities. So if the town was, presumably, if the town was operating the facility, the utilities would be our cost regardless. So all we're looking at is a $30,000 excess of the money that's spent on the utilities. That's correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counsel, any other questions? I'm pleased to see that they're going to be doing some programming over the holidays. I think that's great. I mean, I think, you know, I realize that it's in utilities and in, and, you know, heat and mortar and all of that, but it's still a huge investment for this community in recreation, that building. So I think that they should be doing some, some recreation and offerings for the community. I mean, that's how you win customers, right? So hopefully, they see it that way as well. Okay, Counsel, any other questions? Okay, I'll call the question. And that carries, thank you. We are just rolling right along, so. Oh, updates from Counsel. We have you for Muskoka Watershed update. Okay, we're going to ax that, as per the counselor's request. But thank you. Let me just have a quick look for my sheet of paper. Oh, no. Oh, there it is. It's got a picture on it. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So my update is going to be quite brief. I just wanted to note, first and foremost, that our flags have been lowered for Todd Rumble, and our thoughts remain with his family. He was a valued employee of the town of Gravenhurst, and it's, it's a very sad time for his family, so our, our thoughts are with them. We had a fabulous car show that is well, was really well-attended. I'd be curious to have the chamber come and tell us about it. Would they do to come soon, maybe? Yeah, it would be great. It seemed like a lot of people were there, and it was a gorgeous day. Couldn't have been better, better day. I am going to remind everyone that summer event schedule is out. We've got lots happening in this community, as we always do. Summer, Gravenhurst is the place to be for the summer. So find, you know, find the list and get out and enjoy it. We are going to be at, on Canada Day at Gull Lake Rotary Park on July 1st, so that's exciting. We had the mayor's tea, which was, which was well-attended. And there we, we presented Bruce Hemphill with his Ontario Senior of the Year Award, which was a great, a great afternoon. Always great to celebrate the people, the doers in the community, the helpers. And I've got from our art committee, Public Art Committee, in collaboration with the Muskoka Discovery Center, has developed a new gallery wall program where you can showcase your art. Apply today to have your art displayed in our main entry and council chambers as part of this new program. So that's on Thursday, June 26th, from 4:00 to 6:00, right where we are. So if you know anybody, and they want some, you know, to showcase their art, we're happy to have them to come to this event. It says Gravenhurst Town Hall, right on my, I hope that's the case. Anyway, so that's my, my wrap-up. It's busy season. We'll welcome back some of our seasonal residents, and lots of, lots of lake association meetings coming up. So it'll be good times. Great, Counselor Johnston?
Thank you, Worship. I just wanted to say, you mentioned the tea, how much I enjoyed that. And a lot of, I really did. That was a great group of people. The program was very well put together. That young lady who sang was magnificent. And a number of people, when I was serving with my colleagues, mentioned that now that my government career is over, I have a new career as being a waiter, so. There you go. Thank you for that opportunity.
Well, that's good. We're always learning here, aren't we? And thank you, I mean, credit goes, let's give credit where credit is due, to the Recreation Department, specifically Nicole Crown, who had to, had to, what's the word? Entertain me in my efforts to put it on, or produce my vision, I guess? We co-created, so that's nice. So that was a group effort, but they, they did all the, the heavy lifting, so. And you're right, Cassandra Bois was amazing, and I was so glad that she took us on on the opportunity, like I said, at the, at the event. I just reached out to her on Facebook and said, hey, how'd you feel about this? And so she did a great, great job, so. And so that's that. And with that, I will call for an adjournment. Counselor Robinson and Counselor Varney, all in favor? That carries, thank you. And I didn't vote. Okay. Okay, Counsel, is there any disclosures of pecuniary interest for the council agenda? Okay, seeing none? It is moved by Counsel Robinson, second by Counsel Strength. Be it resolved that the council minutes from May 13th, 2025 be adopted and circulated. All in favor? Okay, and I didn't vote again. I'm so preoccupied, so. But that carries, thank you. It's moved by Counsel Strength, second by Counsel Varney. Be it resolved that the special council meeting minutes from May 28th, 2025 be adopted and circulated. All in favor? And that carries, thank you. I did that, too. It's moved by Counsel Karen, second by Counsel Hunter. Be it resolved that the committee of the whole minutes from May 13th, 2025 be adopted and circulated. All in favor, please vote. And that carries, thank you. It is moved by Counsel Johnston, second by Counsel Jorgensen. Be it resolved that the following bylaws be read, passed, and engrossed into the bylaw book. Bylaw Number 202542, clean and clear, and Bylaw Number 202543, property standards. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. It's moved by Counsel Robinson, second by Counsel Johnston. Be it resolved that Bylaw Number 202544, to confirm the council meeting held on June 17th, 2025, be passed. Please vote. And that carries, and a motion to adjourn, Counsel Strength and Counsel Hunter. Okay, as usual, thanks to staff, and thanks to Counsel.